Well, what everybody apparently.
Okay, I don't see it.
Again, it's not our.
We close again Wednesday morning.
Yeah, they were there all day.
All day Wednesday.
The way I gather, the meeting wasn't until Wednesday.
Right, yes.
They closed at two o'clock on Tuesday. Get Spencer by nine AM meeting.
Wednesday. We have seen it.
So that kind of just segues me back into. I know we don't.
Right.
They brought up a lot of contentious discussion, but a whole. What's the county pay for this? We're gonna get hung for hotel rooms for. For something you can drive to and get up at late by seven in the morning to be at a meeting at nine o'clock.
Right.
Now, we're gonna get hung up on hotel rooms for everybody.
For seven people. And males.
That's why that email kind of came out. That curious little past Jack, if we have anything, he got any examples.
That's right.
Oh, that's what I came.
Yeah, that's from Jack. That's under counties language that they currently have. I think we need a mileage, you know, the meetings less than a hundred miles. We're not.
There are times like say like.
You can go stay, but it's on your dime.
You know what I mean? But you have meetings that night, like you.
Well, there's sometimes that people will go the night before, you know, beat the weather or whatever, but.
I give that. Right, if it's weather, but right.
But you don't know.
But there, I think it'd be appropriate when we have things that we don't think are.
If you say you cut it off at a hundred mile, I mean, Des Moines is a hundred and twenty, so you're always gonna have.
Right, right. Des Moines would always. I think you almost need to bring them in and have them explain. In our open meeting. I mean, part of the public, I mean, let them hear why they're having the expenses at a hotel room. That's perfect. To Spencer and close down at two o'clock. I mean.
I guess.
She is.
Just the old farmer.
I, I, I get it.
And you're.
I gotta get all my work done today, so I can.
And I'm not saying to not go down the path of investigating with Jack Reed. Something to fine tune it, but I still think it would be right to bring them in and say, hey, explain this expense.
Yeah, because we're trying to figure out what we're gonna make for rule on this. And if you had a good reason why that, you know.
Yeah, I just, for me. I mean, they got a good reason, but I just can't wrap my mind around that. You know, it should, you know me, I get up and drive to Des Moines for meetings and ready to turn and come back home, so.
It should be some.
That's me. I'm not saying everybody has to do what I do. I mean, I get that.
The parameters are good.
I know.
What's acceptable and what's.
Part of me trying to do what you can't say, but I mean, Jean kept me awake all day Des Moines and back.
That's a terrible drive. That's a long drive.
Great. I didn't even have to turn the radio on.
We even drove around.
And you couldn't turn it off either.
Yeah, because Joey was.
As we drove around Galloway Yard. It was a thing. Oh.
You have an intercom on your bike?
No. But you know how to get, I know how to get the message across, we need to pull over. I usually have my book in my ears over anything.
You know.
My peaceful time.
To value everybody else's time, that's about all I have, so. You know, other than you know. Supervisors, depth of their family.
Yeah.
That shook me to my core.
I think that would be a good idea. I mean, I'd, I'd be.
Maybe we should card or chip in and do something.
Yeah, you know, I sometimes think, you know, the plaques that you have that you can set in your gardens or, you know, someplace.
Yeah, like more hardscape stuff versus just a player.
I've got some wind chimes when my brother passed away and when I listen to them, they're calling to me, so I love wind chimes.
We're up for anything.
Hi, yeah.
Well, I'll go shopping for you guys if you want me to.
Would you? Let me know.
Yeah, let us know what we need.
I will.
Pitch in.
I will, I will. I also have a call.
Long standing supervisor.
Okay, I'll do that.
For you.
Oh, something to remember.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a bad deal.
Yeah. Yeah, I would, I would, you work with them, I mean, you know, you can.
I was on Dennis's city council.
Certainly, I mean, Eric's a pillar of our community and he served at city council, he served as county supervisor.
He's still on the Wesco.
DMU is probably a big part of what, he was a big part of the DMU, I mean, that, yeah, big part of our community, yeah.
Just think of Crocs, my friend.
Yeah, yeah, how many people he touched.
See, they're working on Crocs.
Yeah, that guy said that. Well, I'm sorry.
Big Facebook post on what he has intentions to do.
You bet. I was impressed with the intentions were.
Steakhouse. Not, not a used car dealership.
A steakhouse.
Not a bodega or whatever the heck it said. Yeah, I mean, he said he intends to keep it a lot like Eric had.
And keep the name Crocs.
Yeah, gotta love that.
I like the house.
You know what? I love the historical part of that.
I do too.
My grandmother baked there, so I guess I got a little touch to that. Wow, yeah, that's a, you know, that was a long damn day. So, uh, are you, you.
Yeah, I yield my time.
All right. The floor. Mr. Dozar, the floor is yours.
I guess the only thing I had last night, we did have a Wesco meeting, annual meeting last night, so it was. Those get to be rather long, they have about two and a half hours. And the budget that they passed for twenty-three, twenty-four shows a profit of six hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Outstanding.
So that's good, and I just wanted to get, I guess, some. Uh, maybe historical information, but the way I understand it is that we used to. County boards of supervisors used to help fund Wesco. And years ago, they stopped doing that, and then the county board of supervisors had an option whether they wanted to leave someone on the board of directors. And Crawford, Carroll, and Otten chose to keep someone on the board of directors. Is that accurate? Does anyone else know?
All right.
And the other counties that used to contribute, they decided not to keep someone on the board?
That's all right, if I remember what Eric mentioned about it.
So we, we do, we provide no funding to Wesco.
Yeah, correct. No.
Well, I think ideally up, probably upfront, the funding got them off the ground and going, and then it's like, okay, now they're self-sustaining, let's.
When Clay does a hell of a job there.
Use those funds elsewhere.
He does very nice job, and one thing that we did do was across the board raises for everyone at fourteen percent.
Oh, my.
And so.
And they still had six hundred plus?
And they still had six hundred.
What's that put up their average wage to?
Their average wage, I wrote that down, twenty will be twenty-one, just about twenty-one fifty, I think it was twenty-one forty-six, forty-seven.
Having some hiring issues.
They were until they, Clay implemented this a year ago. It was a three-phase thing to raise everyone's wage. And he feels that they are. I don't wanna say by far, but in this region, they are the highest paying entity that does what they do as far as working with the disabled. When you look at Mosaic and New Hope, and that has helped their retention, that has helped employee morale. And as the board, we really felt that it was, if we're gonna do it to the rank and file, we're gonna do it to everyone. Everyone has contributed to the success of Wesco, and so they did it across the board for management, executive management.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody.
You know, and they're, and, and the people that they work with are, they're active parts of our community. I mean, where would it be without Wesco? I mean, them people, whether they're working at Walmart, they're so friendly all the time, and they're really have become a vital part of our community.
And they'd like to be more involved. I think that's on Clay's. Um, I wanna say master plan, but something that he'd like to see, wanted to see the board give him more input on where Wesco could be more involved. What else can we do?
Yeah.
And so I guess that's something where it challenged us to come up with some thoughts, ideas, things where Wesco can be involved where maybe they're not now. But.
Dewey Dice still on the board?
Who's that?
Dewey Dice. He was on board for a few years, so he ran out of it.
The Otten. Um, Rick Thompson.
Rick Thompson's the one.
Is the one that's on now, right? So that's really it. I mean, I, um. Just to let, and also, we had an annual meeting for the, what the Lust Hills Alliance. And I'm the new secretary for the Lust Hills Alliance.
Congratulations.
Way to volunteer.
We only meet annually.
Oh, so it's not a lot of.
It's not a lot of.
You're gonna have a harder time remembering where the members are.
How'd I put that?
Um, but then they're kind of work, they're in, if you wanna say cahoots, they're in alliance with the Hungry Canyons. That I also serve on that board, and, and funding for that has been approved for next year, and it's been the same, I think, for the last five years. Hundred Canyons is five hundred thousand, the Lust Hills Alliance is forty thousand. So that is really all I got.
Okay, outstanding. Do you yield, Mr. Mulbauer? Your floor is yours.
All right, I'm pretty short for you guys. I have Region Twelve coming up Thursday here, twelve-thirty. On our OPLA conference coming up, May twenty-fourth, I did get an email back from Kelsey.
Yeah.
Did you get one?
Yeah.
I told her.
Did you respond?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
I told her I just needed one night, just Wednesday night.
Oh, okay.
She sent back that, that's fine, because they, they only had a certain amount.
Thirty-five or something.
Yeah, and to me, that's more for like Jason Vanderhoff out of Osceola that has to drive four hours.
Right.
You know, let.
Let him have the.
Let him have the.
Yeah.
Night before, and I was kind of planning on driving out that morning of, and then staying overnight, and I don't know, is that what you're planning?
So we could. We could ride together, I could.
Okay.
Leave my car at your place. Wait.
Take keys, I guess.
I will take the keys.
I can come pick you up.
I don't know. Kids I worry about, it's Eli and Robert and Caleb.
That's what I'm actually saying, Eli's around there.
That's true. That, we have known cars, Saran Wrap, or peanut butter, or.
Hmm, you can pick me up in the Nella then. Or Manny, I guess.
Um, so yeah, so I signed up, we haven't got room confirmation yet.
No, not yet.
That's coming out of here. Plan, so I really have.
Yielding to me?
Yeah.
All right, very good. Uh, I had someone call me about the Lake Shore bathroom out at Yell's Park.
Lake Shore.
Yeah, it's the one with the, out, the, down by the water, it's got the cupboard. Down by the water.
On the south of the beach. They used to have concessions in part of it, and then the rest.
By the beach?
No, not by the beach, it's across from the beach.
On the south.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Got it. So they're wondering, and it was in person, about my age, so it's, uh, that, they understand why the screen door is there. But it's, there's a screen door, and then there's nothing, uh, they're thinking that there should be some kind of a door where the actual, uh, uh. Art of pod is, um, because somebody, somebody could just walk in or look in, and they just really.
There's no like, no stall doors?
Yeah, not really, no.
Also, you're kind of exposed.
Really, really too primitive, and what their thoughts are, is they know that that's used so much for like baby showers and cancenaras and all sorts of different things. And, you know, for all the use that that gets, it should have a way that if you're in there, so you can just walk in and, you know.
So you gotta roll the toilet paper or you just gotta box.
They were very complimentary on how clean it was. There was no problem with any of that, um, because I.
You said it was primitive.
Yeah, well, the door for privacy.
Yeah, just a, a, a door that used to.
A new door.
Yeah, maybe that. So, so we did a little test run on it, and I'm like, yeah, probably need a little something there, so, uh, and you don't know about those things unless somebody brings them up. So it's a very, you know, just a thought that we could maybe look into having just a.
Just mention that, uh?
I didn't, I brought it up here, uh, so I could call. I don't like to.
I was going to tell Mary.
That I'm not really on, because then we have like five losses.
Tell me again.
Nice to marry right now.
Anyway, that's just a thought. Um, I wanted to give a mental health update. Remember I talked about the, the individual that had been found walking along Highway fifty-nine? And I was concerned that maybe he was a catch and drop-off. Uh, so I had Caitlin Bishop kind of looking into that for me. She didn't know anything about this person until I called. So she took the rings and found out where this individual was, and he's getting the help that he needs. He's a little transient. So they, they don't have a location, but they're working on getting a court order to have him committed. Uh, because what, he didn't wanna go voluntarily. He spent a couple of nights in the hospital. Um, she's onto his situation. They did get him some medication, but they're working on possibly getting a court order so that they can, you know, make sure he's getting help.
Where is his unofficial residence? Do they, do we know?
He's a transient, so they really, she really didn't know, uh, she feels.
Number one on the register.
Yeah, so the reason I bring it up is it worked the way it was supposed to, um, even though, you know, so I just wanted to give a positive swing on my mental health once. So that was important to me.
And we get the sheriff department started.
Yep, it was good, so.
He's gonna look into it. You said there always used to be a part.
Okay, yeah, there's a, there's a small one, but it's, you know, it's not, you really could just, yeah, thank you. Um, I talked to Paul Grappel with this compensation, and so he was having a little knee surgery today as we speak, but he. Gosh, what did they do with it? It was right here a minute ago. Anyways, he gave us some dates. He prefers to meet with us in person, this, this compensation guy. Uh, or he's, yeah, he's more than glad to, uh, do a Zoom meeting, but he prefers a in, uh.
In person.
In person, but he's, he's having a knee scoping, so I'll find it here. I'll give you the dates that he would be available here. I had that up, and then my computer shut down, and then it went away. Come on, let's go. Let's go, it's still time.
Still got things supposed to.
I see that HR, tell me that.
Yes, you would have missed his speech, because.
No, I'm done.
Right here. All right, so he's saying, I prefer to meet in person, but I can meet in Zoom. He scheduled for knee spoke today, uh, so it won't work till after that. Uh, he could call around eleven o'clock today, maybe. He's hoping that we didn't get that worked out. I have an in-person conflict on the sixteenth, and the twenty-third, but I could join via Zoom for conference call. He's open on the thirtieth if you wanna meet him personally.
May thirtieth?
Uh-huh. So it's our, whatever we want.
It's what we, it's what we're, it's what we're doing on May thirtieth. We might be done playing by then.
We don't wanna schedule things that screw that up, either.
I hope we are, because my kid goes back to college by then, for summer.
Oh, he, is he in school?
Yeah, he's still gonna, he graduated, but he's gotta go back and do some summer.
G R E U F L.
Oh, out there.
G R E U F L.
Yeah, is Mike still out there?
He was, uh, one of the ISET presenters a few years back, and I was very kind of hopeful there, and then some counties that are using him.
He was Carter's.
That competition is no longer just a starboard wheel, you know, exactly what the jobs are, what the comparisons are.
Yeah.
Like cost of money, like cost of last month, you know, good to know that every, everybody's not, you know, it was, it was very big. So we remember it for two years, and now it's.
Maybe, maybe the state should have talked to this guy before they started to drive.
Yeah, probably. Probably. Um, I also had.
Yeah, they should have.
Yeah.
Tell you what, that's that meeting, and then like when them dip cops come up from San Antonio, they were the two best meetings.
Yep.
I made every dollar we paid ISET worth.
I agree.
Just them two.
Yep, and it was two years ago, and we still kind of remember that, and still run back, and he's more than glad to.
They're not all home runs, but they try.
Well, they do, they do a good job, I think. I mean, just some of them really hit the mark.
Yeah, and they pay the money to come and give the speech, and he's just glad that somebody was actually paying attention, I guess, so that was good. Uh, the other thing that I need to bring up to the board here would be, uh, our wellness committee met again, and we had a gentleman on the Zoom. Who is with new market tax, which is a tax credit kind of a deal, could give us up to three point five million dollars. It's an investment deal. I, I could pass around the whole deal if anybody's really interested. Now I took that away and put Paul up. Uh, make it long story short, the wellness committee did a vote to entertain doing a contract with this gentleman so that we could take advantage of the tax credits that are available. One of the reasons that we are very eligible for these is because of the diversity and the, uh. We're a underserved community, and he, he actually made a comment that we're extremely underserved, and we all thought that was funny that he picked that somewhere. Um, but the question that they had, so now we're, this guy's got a fee that goes along with it. So the city has been picking up all of the expenses so far, as far as with the architects and things like that from their ARPA funds. And so the question is, what, how far along, what's the next step? And when can they ask for some money for this project from the county that we've set aside for this wellness center? I know it was, you know, once we're sure it's a, a, a deal, uh, we are going to be at their city council meeting to, uh, have them sign this contract. The YCA is also still, this was still there, and they are giving us their, uh, contract very soon. You know, so we just kind of need to know what, what this county, you know, when we made our, uh.
So who's signing these contracts? Uh, who's going in?
Is there a twenty-eighties?
There is no twenty-eighty, no. We just have our commitment and our ARPA funds to, you know, so they're just wondering what, what's the next step? And where's, which the county's, uh, idea of when we can start helping them with these expenses.
I was gonna complain about my taxes.
Okay. The assessor's.
Stand in line. He's turned that into the tail.
That's typical, Les.
I would say go talk to the assessor.
Well, I.
So that was.
So I mean, since we've designated seven hundred and fifty thousand of our ARPA funds to the Wellness Center.
Right.
I mean, does it matter when we give a proportion of that money?
I'm just waiting to make sure. I'm just waiting to make sure that the project was gonna happen.
Right.
Cause when we first did it, it was kinda get everything rolling.
Uh, I will.
And it sounds like they're supposed to break ground.
Yep.
Is it this fall or winter?
Well, and I will say that our endowment and our fundraising committee, there's a number out there of, you know, right around eleven million of where they're at, and then if we can get this three point five million of tax credits from this new market uh, new market tax incentive, I think that's their name, hold on, uh, you know, I guess it's pretty close to the goal.
But where does that tax credit?
That's, it's a real complicated, he was on for, I, I, I can pass this around.
I didn't know a tax credit gave you money.
It's the investors, uh, let me.
They give you the money.
Let me pass this around for you, uh, this is.
You can only get a tax credit from the people you pay the tax to.
New market tax credits, uh, provided the name, blah, 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 let me see if I get, uh. It's a complicated deal.
What was the county's portion that was?
Seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Matching.
Matching the city.
The city of Madison has receipts up. If they provide us with the receipts, I think we could just cut, just cut the money.
Check for that.
With whatever the city has spent year to date.
Here's a letter that'll help. Think it'll make it easier for you guys to read the letter than have me read it to you, cause that tastes up my mental.
We said it wasn't gonna be in kind stuff either, we'd hate to waste any of that.
So that might be it though, it was all kind of.
Get that, Jean?
It's good news Tuesday, what?
Yeah, I think just, they can provide us with the receipts of the amount that they've spent towards this, cause we said we had matched dollar for dollar up to seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Cause they've been paying the architects, they've.
So if they're up to thirty or to fifty thousand, I mean, we can write a check for that, whatever they've already spent.
And that was what I needed to report back, cause we're having another meeting on Friday to kinda firm some things up. And so I wanted to be able to bring that answer back to you.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
I'm okay, that makes perfect sense.
Okay, alright, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate that.
I didn't add that, you did. But speaking of ARPA funds, I know Greg called me yesterday, maybe you can elaborate on that too, but they're getting some preliminary cost estimates out of Raycom.
Yeah.
Not good.
It's gonna be pricey. Our problem is all of our old stuff, it might be too old to match up and.
Yeah, it sounds like the three microwave dishes that are currently out there don't match anything new, so we're gonna have to all.
I'm in that.
And they're like fifty thousand a piece, so there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, probably more. They think a million dollars would cover equipment maybe.
So we have to sign.
Well, yesterday he said a million and a half, him and Tim would've been talking.
He says they're.
It's.
Well, wellness.
Oh, that's kinda the letter being, the letter.
So with that being said, I think we, I think we got a little cushion left on our ARPA funds, but I think we're gonna need them all.
Yeah, we're gonna need a lot of it.
Or we're gonna have to.
Or we're gonna have to tax.
Right.
You know, and that was kinda part of our thing, is if we didn't have to tax this, then we were moving into years beyond.
Email from?
That's from, oh, Jennifer Zoop had forwarded it from uh, New Market.
That National Weather Service thing that uh, that was out of the river tower.
Yeah, sorry.
Where's that money going?
Sorry.
But these things, fingers and thumbs doing it on my own computer all the time. Sorry, have you yielded, Matt?
I yield.
Okay.
Someone asked me the other day and I did a little research.
Anyway, uh, I guess I'll talk a little today.
Can you ask some questions?
Greg and I and, and Paul went out and did the drive with the, with the crane guy last week. And that went really well, didn't even, well, took longer to drive from site to site than it did to do anything. I did a little bit of road investigating too in between.
Did you actually bring a six semi out there?
Yes, we actually brought one of the low boys out and the one that I really wanted to check with was on stands down there, cause he's got fence right away and all that. And Damon, I tried to hire him, he'd be a hell of a pick holder. Yep, good kid, good kid. Anyway.
He didn't take you up on that?
No, he did not take me up, he said, I've done that, been there, done that, I think was the quote.
Oh, you could find it.
Anyway, uh.
I understand how.
The roads all look good to them, they're actually are art at stands, that's a mannel site. We're gonna have to scrape some of the rock off, cause Damon even spun out driving up it, now there'll be weight on it going up, but if once you start spinning, he had to back way down and get a run forward then, so.
But getting in and out was.
He ended, he had to do a little jacking, but it sounds like the trucks that are bringing them are, well, they're gonna bring their day cab up and it's just a, and I don't know, he said it was a forty-eight footer. With a spread, so, and, cause I think our trailer was fifty-three. So, he should be able to get in pretty good. I think if he pulls ahead a little bit jacks and pulls in and then kinda gets off on the grass like Damon did, so. And then even getting up, he just drove right up, he actually backed right up into, down at Lance's place.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, actually, I don't know, somebody's been down there, I, I, I think they said they've been, like when they've been out working out there, they've been driving up and down packing that. So that road was actually set up, starting to set up pretty good. The only thing I noticed while we were out there, I'm standing there looking and I said, Paul, where's all our markers that tell us where everything is? And Paul said they'd send Brent back out to do it if it needed to be when we put fence up, and I said, there's nothing on it. They actually put the power box outside of our property. So, we'll probably have a little expense of getting that back worked on, but then when we're looking through all the paperwork on the original blueprint, it's on the outside of our property, so he thought the property was a fence line or something, I don't know. So anyway, we got to uh, probably adjust that because I don't think Lance will, you know, I mean, it's in them trees there we were talking about. That's Lance's property, that's why we never took any of them trees down.
Okay, the ones that, when I look at the GIS map, we talked about that. Our, that's GIS versus boots on the ground difference.
You bet.
Can we move the, the line?
We haven't purchased one.
We already paid blank for what we got.
Cause you're talking, I mean, it's that, on the other side of fence.
Yeah, it's just right on the other side.
Rather than moving them.
Yeah, we either have to move it or I would suggest moving it.
Moving it would be cheaper than buying a foot of right away.
Well, it'd probably take four foot.
Well, I guess we'd need to tie the nest.
Move it versus what it would cost a five, four foot from Lance, you know.
Who put it, who put it in?
Just remember that because of the caterpillar event and all that stuff, the plants isn't always very happy with us.
Who, does it go back to liability though, who? Who put it in?
Well, that's exactly what, but the thing is. It's on Mike's paperwork, so they didn't read it wrong, it showed it on Mike's paperwork being exactly where it's sitting.
Okay, so that's not the installers?
Yeah, it's, it wasn't REC from Harrison County, well, I don't, I don't think it was anyway, by looking at.
Mike's group should fix it.
There we go.
Right?
I got an email from them, they wanna confer what we wanna have them do versus, you know, they see that we're trying to be thrifty.
Cause they're.
So they wanna confer back and forth to what we're gonna take care of yet versus what they wanna, what we want them to do, so. I got a list of my email, if anybody wants to. I just got that late last night.
Not their first review.
You know, at some point in time, I think once we get the, here, I don't know, it doesn't really help your discussion, but through that thrifty list, I think at what point in time do we just cut the umbilical cord with it and say, you know, we got it from here? Cause Raycom will get their own.
Yeah, Raycom.
We won't be.
Let me give you the, I'll read, I'll read off the list here, cause it ain't them, shelter delivery, which is this week. Coordinate electrical service into sites, uh, ensure RF, cause we got our own electricians down here, Greg lined them up.
Right, so.
Um, uh, radio shelter connection to grounding system. Underground ring was done by Saber. Yeah, and I've seen where all them wires are sticking up everywhere, I asked them, I said, how many of them do we need, cause they're everywhere. But you gotta ground the fence and everything, I didn't realize that.
Oh.
Cable, ice bridge installation and placement will.
I think, I'm guessing when Raycom's hanging their equipment, I can suck them right back through to put the ice bridges above the saddle like their microwave dishes. I would think.
I wouldn't, we need to check on that, maybe have Greg go over this list and.
He said he'd be here.
Talk with Tim or something, yeah, he said he would be here. Uh, relocation and installation of tower light, light, lighting controllers, that'd be kind of our electrician, wouldn't it?
The, the controller, yeah.
Yeah.
It's just hanging on the side of the tower.
Yeah, I'm kinda leaning on your experience when you guys put the other ones up there, so. You know, if you can remember, that's been a while ago. Uh, tower fencing, you know, we've been, that Klein. I mean, I think that he'll probably get his own products and all that stuff, so I mean, we just gotta kinda know what we want. And I think you just go around the tower and up to the boxes like we've done like up around Ridge Road, I think that works pretty good. And then our, our gas barrels gotta be outside and then, does electric box have to be outside the fence so that they could check on it? When nobody's around, is that why we put it outside? Otherwise, somebody's gotta go out there to let them in.
Well, the problem, I just thinking through that tie, I've never thought of it till now and here then, we're gonna have to build another fence around everything, cause you don't want the cows from out of the walls rubbing against the electrical box, the meter box and stuff in that picture, so.
So I think we.
Then we put it in the, in the containment, or we gotta build the containment fence and another.
You got an old hay ring throw around it?
But, so like, yeah, that's something we need to verify.
So anyway, and then it says RF, Ray Freeman needs to verify final location staking and install connection from the ground field, that's for the fans. Uh, ground grading, cleanup and fabric and gravel, you know, you know that fabric they put like they do to.
Higher deal landscaping or one of our local guys to do that.
I mean, Paul would bring a rock on. Unless we wanna do everything through somebody like Gil or, but I think putting that fabric down to help us with not having to spray a lot of chemicals out there.
Yes, I don't disagree with that.
Yeah, I mean, it probably paid for itself in a few years of what we'd have to, I mean, I, you're still gonna get some weeds. But, you know, not very many, we could almost have secondary roads, ditch crew would do that, the roadside. Our own asparagus. Propane tank grounding, I mean, the propane guys will do, they, they grounded my tank when I, when I, when I moved it, for goodness sake. So, I think that's probably huge enough to take care of.
I was pulling the asparagus, picks it, cleans it, puts it in a bag, drops it off in our fridge.
Does she do your laundry too? Oversight, oversee cell sites refurbishment, that'd be the only thing is if they want, if we wanted them to oversee the remodeling of the small shelter. I mean, that would be one thing that I could see maybe.
Yeah.
Final inspection and sign off.
Well, they should be on their final inspections, I know.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of that stuff, we can, you know, through Greg and, you know, having Tim on our staff kinda is a you know, kind of an ace in the hole, because he understands a lot of that stuff.
So when do you expect that final?
Oh, I was hoping for midsummer, but.
Sounds like there might be some.
On the final part.
Final, yes.
Yeah.
If we get all the generators and, and of all that stuff, I mean, it depends on when the fencing guy can get up here.
Okay.
So that's why I say, when I say hoping midsummer. I'd like, at least do it all, one of them. Um, yeah, you're here, give me, I'm done, give me a minute. So that, that covers all of that stuff. I did get a email. I'll discuss that a little bit about uh, the uh, imagination station, but I think I explained our position fairly well.
I read your response back and I thought it was.
I tried to be, so I thought, well, I'll take it, so I don't, so we didn't have to all respond since you brought in more than one of us. But uh, I explained that pretty well, but I, I did wanna bring up, though, that they are having a fundraiser. So, you know, they answered that call that we asked them to, so that, that made me pretty happy and actually I've already kind of thrown a few betting that. So, uh, personally, you know, but uh, so I, 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 that, 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 that kinda warmed my heart that they started that process already, so that was a good deal. Anyway, um. Did you talk to the uh, did anybody go and talk to the lady that did the book signing yesterday, the Olson lady?
I did not.
Jane, somebody should've went and that might've helped you with your, should've sent Tim up. They've got a, he's on the board of Berkshire, they might actually have a fund that they grant for. Anyway.
I think he has helped out with the vanilla.
Yeah, he did, well, he helped with your little.
Little hogs.
Yeah, yeah, heck, must be a heck of a nice guy, but anyway, his wife, she must, we had what is Luke and Angel's daughter, that's just graduated.
Kylie.
Kylie, she is going, this, Mrs. Olson was a uh, international war correspondent journalist. And then that's what she, this girl wants to be is an international journalist, so I said, you should get over, I don't know if she made it last night, but I'll bet she'd love it if she did. Anyway, interesting stuff that we had going on, I thought it was pretty. Some, some, some hometown Crawford kids have done extremely well for themselves, extremely well for themselves. So anyway, Paul, sorry to take a little time, but go ahead, the floor is yours, sir.
No problem. You over the uh, construction projects, it went along well, um, grave's back working.
I heard of Paul and Joe was coming around yesterday, Sunday, Saturday morning. We drove over there and actually walked up there, yeah, Paul's work done on the south side, moving right along.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, they're working on the piling on the north here and they should have those all driven here probably this morning yet. And then they'll work on the encasement.
That's a pretty fast pounder too, isn't it?
Yeah, she gets right out. It's not like they'll drop.
Yeah, we've got gravity, they got these.
Oh, well, that's a lot quicker than what we got.
We're getting good bearing and that's good, so it'll be a nice bridge.
I think some good gray clay there, so they're gonna need some good bearing.
Oh, yeah.
Pile, they have dug, there's spoil piles, so.
Yeah, yeah, they'll be, they'll be good bearing, there's eleven spoil pile in each one, so there's almost very little room between the encasement, there's so many.
That bridge should be there for a few weeks.
Yeah, long.
Hundred year bridge.
I'm in favor of that. For seeing the fake uh, overreach of overall.
Yeah, yeah.
But anyways.
Um, so, so yeah, the asphalt project, they'll have all the. All the asphalt north of uh, Highway thirty will be done today, they, they don't get ruined out, so. And then they'll start working on the final lift south of Highway thirty and, and if it does rain, they'll do shoulder, which will be perfect. To do that in rain, because we want moisture in the pile.
Yeah.
And uh, so couple of weeks of good weather and ding, they could be out of there.
Boy, that'd be perfect, yeah, I've been getting asked questions.
Yeah, now we have one little thing and people might say on the curve, so you go north and then you go back to the east and you go around that curve, back in twenty fifteen, we put a couple of inches of overlay on that. We didn't mill it, and we're just putting an inch and a half on it, and what happens is, is where you seal the cracks, the joint sealing material reheats when the hot asphalt hits it, and it'll skim a little bit, and it'll give you just a little bump, okay? And since we're just doing one lift on that, because, you know, hindsight, we probably should've just skimmed it with the mill to take that off or we should've put what's called a scratch course on it, it's too late now, it's not terrible, but if you do notice these little, these little bumps up there, that's what it's from, okay, and uh, I'll take responsibility for that, you know? We should've probably done a scratch course, uh, didn't realize we had to seal that many cracks on that, but we did. And uh, that's how you would deal with it and that's what's causing those, they won't be very noticeable.
Motorcycle.
It's a contractor and I know it, so.
Motorcycles will know it.
Yeah, I know. You'll feel a little bump, just a, but just a little, a little thing in that portion, otherwise the rest of it looks fantastic, so they're doing a great job. So.
Good carpers never reveal their faults. Good carpers never reveal their faults, they just cover it up.
Trim, they just get an extra thick trim board.
You either have trim or you buy bigger outlet covers and you know, everything's fine. It could always be covered up, uh, anyhow, so that's, that's where we're at with those two projects, uh, the two hundred and ninety street grading. Anyhow, so that's, that's where we're at with those two projects, uh, the two hundred ninety street grading, they're working down there, it's. Been a little bit tough with the rain here just recently, but nonetheless, moving on real well, Rainbow Trust Bridge, that's the bridge crew's at right now. They're down. Be down by day and checking yours, uh, working on that, as soon as we get done with that, they're gonna go up and work on a pipe vibration. It's a Hunter Canyons project, so, uh, roadside crew continues to see, we'll start mowing here the week before Memorial Day. We always mow Memorial Day, fourth of July, all paved roads, cemeteries before the holidays, so they'll start mowing. To get that done, and we'll start spraying too, so.
I think that works really well, I mean, right ahead of Memorial Day.
Looks nice.
Looks nice, I know we've talked in the past where we've had inquiries about not mowing more often, but at what cost? But when you do it Memorial Day, Labor Day, it just seems like those are two good timings to do it.
Yeah, and fourth of July, we do those, the three holidays for the paved roads, and then we'll start doing everything after the Labor Day and Holiday.
Seems like we just have.
Seems to work well. Yep, yep. Uh, next item is plans for the Manila shop, so these are done, just gonna cover all the red lines and the plans here. We're gonna get those done today and get these packaged up, so, um, you know, I have no idea what this is gonna cost. You know? And, and, you know, the building itself and the engineered steel building is six to nine months out, so.
We use wood though, don't we, don't, you've, you heard you gotta steal some.
Oh, they're all engineered steel.
Is it all steel?
They're all steel buildings. I think it just gives us better.
Life return, yeah.
A little extra money, but they're nice buildings, so everything we've done since I've been here that we designed and rolled in that, that system, so.
Cause how much was the last building that you built?
Isn't that two hundred fifty to two hundred seventy-five thousand?
That was how long ago?
That was twenty sixteen.
Twenty sixteen, yeah. You know, I've been here, we just expected to almost.
This is probably gonna be. Yes, the number is probably gonna be a three fifty to four hundred, probably, alright.
So. I'd say a third again.
Yeah.
Concrete's gonna be the big deal, always is.
Steel's high.
Too high, right?
So I, 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 you know, I've talked to a couple of contractors, and they've kinda given me ballpark per square foot numbers on a, on a building. So I, I think we're gonna be okay, but.
Think they'll be available also, contractors or?
Yeah, I've given, I mean, the completion date on this is gonna be July first of twenty twenty-four, so they seem to think that was okay. You know, so give them plenty of time to build it, uh, open the thing up a little bit, we're not in a huge rush. You know, so if they call me back and say, hey Paul, we can't get the building due twelve months. We'll adjust it, so we still have a shot. We did, you know, there's some, and I've got pictures of it if you wanna see them, but I, I, so we, we basically had a pickup semi tractor, which I just got the estimate. He'd mail to me as I was sitting here, um, for the semi, for the semi tractor, uh, so we turned all that in. Uh, in the building, we took pictures of the top of the roof, you know, it's a standing seam roof, we don't wanna tear it off. I'm not gonna turn that roof off for a few nipples.
I got the same dilemma.
So it's like, I talked to Kurt Miller down there at Offens, you know, they, they're our agent, right, yeah, we're, we're a self insured group. You tell me, to return it as a claim, I don't wanna tear the roof off, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna fix it. I'm not gonna tear that roof off for a few days.
I know, everybody up there has.
Yeah, yeah, and so. I don't know, the, the vehicles, I don't even know if we're gonna fix the vehicles.
The easier one, the little, small ones, sometimes the sun will pull them out.
Yeah, I mean, we may take the check and just drive the vehicles away.
Is what it is.
Yeah, so.
They're the size of baseballs, the hail.
It's huge, yeah, yeah, so we inspected the roads, we looked, everything we're turning it on.
I had experience firsthand.
Yeah, oh yeah, we got hit pretty hard. I'm back here, it looked like a ping pong.
First time, or did you get hit last night too?
I about called just cause the highway salt charred road was about that deep of hail.
Yeah.
I was watching, I was waiting for phone calls.
Which, I'm sure the guys are up checking, but.
Oh yeah, they're all out.
There's a lot of new address developed overnight. What do you do, when you dump an inch and a half of rain in twenty minutes?
You go fix it, move on, so, yeah.
Coming down off the roof, just film.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve item number four on Paul's agenda.
Motion to, and, and that's for the bid, and secondary road Manila shop, yep, second by. Mister Schultz, all in favor, state so by saying aye. Pose nay. Had a frog in my throat, so I kinda breathed it in.
We got you.
I always sign last.
So, uh, you know, so we do, we do all that in-house, you know, and all the design, they're, you know, they're not real elaborate. I had a like local electrician kinda look over the. You know, just to kinda make sure there's not any other, you know, ruining issues there, but we just kinda do it all here, so. It seems to have worked. Um, the next item is, uh. Okay, I got a blue pen, I mean.
I've been signing it in blue for.
It's a different shade of blue.
If you sign with a, a different color, it's not gonna be the end of the world, lightning's not gonna strike you. These all stay, I do have a few just little minor things, Brent's been on the asphalt jobs, he'll change those this afternoon, and then we'll. He's sending those out, yeah, you're more than, I can get a copy of the set for anybody who wants to.
Just can't be black, how's that tie? So you're okay?
There's a blue. Boy, I kinda liked my height and concrete pen, I thought it was a nice blue pen.
It's a nice.
Where do you get those at?
I pa- passed him out.
Okay, uh, so we'll be publishing the notice, we'll be sending those out, so we publish the notice, and then we, uh, we send the notice to the bidders to. We think they respect the contractors, they let us know if they wanna set the plan, suspect, so we're just not randomly sending out the full set. They get a letter that says, hey, here's a notice, if you wanna set a plan, just give us a problem, if you wanna push that in, so that's how it is. We'll convince here in about a month or so. Uh, next item is the engineering services agreement with Calum Burns, this is for the final design of the bridge. Uh, on E sixteen, and, uh, so it's one we're improving funding, so it's about fifty thousand dollars.
For just an architect? Is that what you're gonna do when you retire on us?
I don't know, it might be on sandy beach somewhere.
I heard you need some more driving, but I need a good big hauler.
I make a motion to approve the engineering service agreement with Calum Burns Associates.
That's fifty thousand, yeah?
Yeah, and I'm just, it's, it's in that, it's like forty-nine. But, uh.
Mister Schultz has made a motion to approve the engineering services agreement with Calum Burns Associates Incorporated. For the final design services related to the design of the bridge replacement project, B R S. C O twenty-four thirty-one, one thirty-one, sixty twenty-four, Federal Highway Works Administration number one three zero nine four zero. Are you getting this all wrote down?
Yeah.
Located on the north line of the second twenty-one. T eighty-five north and now. Fifty thousand, or just short of fifty thousand, I have a second, Jean next to second, Mrs. Hayden. All in favor, state so by saying aye. Pose nay, Chair will sign, motion.
Okay, item six there, the open positions, we're gonna interview, do interviews next Monday and Tuesday, Monday for the Ricketts position. And Tuesday for the Down City shop position, so we got a few applications, we're gonna see where that lands.
Pretty decent quality, you think?
Yeah, I'm real impressed with the charter over the, uh, Ricketts, because one I thought we probably really have trouble with, getting where it's at. We got some good applications there, uh, that's a good ones for Down City too, it's, I'd like to see a little more of it.
At least you got some.
Uh, the Tower Site Building Delivery, that's Wednesday and Thursday this week, scheduled anyhow, um, had a good meeting last week, updated. But anyhow, uh, and we're not planning on being there for any of that, but if they know, if they ever phone numbers, they need something.
So I'm gonna be there.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I have a plan to be there, yeah.
Well, if it's not halen or whatever, I have too many to fly, I'll, I'll.
Yeah, uh, the, uh, meeting with the city on the bridge. Uh, I, I think, I think I handed this out to you guys. Yeah, this is what we handed out, and a little bit of a tweak to what it's, there was a little slight variation here, but, uh, but anyhow, generally speaking, this is what we kinda laid out. Um, uh, Gene and I are gonna go to the city council meeting on the sixteen, and kinda share this with the entire city council. But, you know, we're, we're, we're kinda.
So that's not tonight, that's next.
Uh, I think so, the sixteen.
I think it's, I, since I was having it mixed up with the one.
So it was Tuesday the second, and now it'll be the, I think the meeting's always the first and the second, Tuesday the third.
Cause are we discussing on the sixteen Wellness Center that too?
So I'm just an advisor, so I'm not gonna be a.
Really, everybody else is too, so welcome to the dean.
Not when I tell, not when I say they're.
So, yes, we'll be going on the sixteen.
I'll have another meeting on Friday to straighten me out.
Yeah, so. You know, we, we didn't talk about Plan B, if you don't get the rates, Brian, you know, I'm optimistic to be good, I think we kinda decided that that doesn't come through in June.
Get together.
We'll get together again, but, yeah, at some point in time, you know, because of the letter I got or the email from the railroad, you know, saying, okay, who's gonna pay for the fifty thousand? To start their project evaluation process, so we're really not gonna go anywhere with them until we get this worked out. To decide who's gonna work with them, so that's kinda where we're at.
They did mention they have to launch in the.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, um.
One way or the other, it's going forward.
Well, I think at least, I don't think there's a, a better time than right now, it's only a straight to the half. But I'm sure, potentially, almost three million. A better time than that. Almost under the, you know, bridge forty, forty construction dollars, crap dollars. The, excuse me, ten hour workday starts Friday, so the guys won't be working on Friday, they're on, they're off, okay? And then on Monday morning, they start at six, work to four thirty, four days a week, and till September, and then. The last week that they work, they work four eights or four tens, and then eight, that's where they make up this. It was on the backside, so we'll see how it goes.
Excited about it?
Jack, uh, I'm not. But, you know, hey, you know, if that, you know, we're in that era, we wanna make sure that the employees, that they're, they're happy with it, but. I made it clear to them that, for me, early is on time. On time is late, and late is unacceptable.
I'm just gonna have to keep you in that drill start and ask.
That's the truth. We, we, we are, we are not coming to work getting out of our pickup at six o'clock, okay, and I told him this yesterday morning, I said. We are ready to go to work to walk out of the shop at six o'clock, so. I'm just saying, I don't wanna hear stories of guys showing up at six and decide, you know, yeah, it's early, it's early on Monday morning, yeah.
Yeah, that is early.
I, I don't think there'll be any issues, I really don't, I mean, I think the guys are excited enough about it, they'll do what they need to do, but. I, I just don't, I don't want there to be any issues, I don't wanna be petty discussions about this or that, you know? Our job is to take care of the roads, okay, as long as we're doing that, and we're taking care of business, I think every.
It's better to be upfront about it like that, though.
Yeah, usually am.
Tight ship, we appreciate that.
Next week, Chris Clark, that's on the sixteenth too, so we're gonna, I'd like to do a little presentation here, I'll probably have a couple of formants come up if they want to. We'll do a little presentation, I mean, Chris, uh, yeah, he's been there for thirty-five years, done a lot of really good things, I, I'm gonna miss him. You know, like I do all the guys that have worked for us for a long time, so.
You got a pretty young team now.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a few older guys.
So Jack and Larry Clay will be the ones you guys, I didn't hire.
Means you either have a high turnover rate or you've been there a long time.
Well, you only got fifteen more years left.
Hopefully to live. But, uh, a couple of other things that didn't have on here in this kind of last bit, but. You know, I was looking through our expenditures, and this is just kind of indicative of what we're facing, but. There is almost seventy-five thousand dollars in this claims period for fuel. Okay, I think there was a little glitch with new coat or with the chroma, it kicked a couple of them in there, but I'm gonna revisit. I don't know, you know, I got the budget of them, I'm gonna revisit that today and try to anyhow, and take a look, I mean, have you already published everything? It's already, they should have stayed.
We had to have it to them there Friday, so.
Yeah.
It's a done deal. I know.
You know, I mean, it's just, you just don't know. That's, you know, anyhow, hopefully I guessed that enough, and that's what it is, to be honest with you, it's kinda a guessing game, you can, you guys.
It is.
Um, but we'll see how things turn out.
Well, we're headed into summer, so it isn't gonna get cheaper, it's not gonna get any better.
Does that at all make you think about or change, I know we don't pour contract fuel.
We just had, the only, I've only done that in one state, and that was in twenty twenty.
Yeah.
Where we locked in fifteen thousand dollars at, I think, diesel and I don't know how much gas, I West Texas Intermediate went negative. Okay, and we were buying gasoline for forty-one cents a gallon at the rack, and we were buying diesel for a dollar ten or a dollar twenty. It's the only time we've ever done it, cause we figured if it's gone negative, it can't go a whole lot lower, and so. But it's just, we buy so often, I mean, every five to six weeks, we're taking a tanker, and then, you know, you buy. You, you get tank wagon deliveries on a regular basis, we're buying from, Helms is the only one that we actually buy from a station, um, but. He gets a good price, you know, I mean.
It's almost one of those deals that you, like with farmers, like with fungicide, you, you might gotta do it. Over a ten year span, because then it averages out when summer prices go up, but if you could try to jump in and out.
Yeah.
You might catch a bad year where you locked it in and you're paying.
If you locked in diesel last fall, for the spring delivery, you're paying less right now off the tank than when you're locked in brace.
Yeah, I mean, I, I drove through you. Three sixty-five, I'm pretty sure that's what it said on the side, unless there were some dots.
I mean, cause it's lower in certain places, and then all of a sudden it'll go up thirty cents a gallon, it's just too hard to guess it. Thing is, we use a lot of diesel fuel, you know, and when you got three dozers and an excavator, and working every day on grade, and then that burns up a lot of diesel fuel. Although we got one D six X E, that's pretty.
My point is, it's just favorite piece of equipment in the fleet.
It's gonna be a big number, and I did ask me high, so I, you know, I, I hope that, that covered it all, but anyhow, uh. One last thing, do I have, do I have a few minutes?
Yeah, you got five minutes, yeah.
I know Craig, you were, you know, you arrived. We noticed a lot of, uh, dishes that had been filled in, and, uh, and anyhow, uh. You know, I, I was out yesterday with Damon and Chris, and, and, and this is just, uh. Okay, just pass that around. And this landowner knew about this four or five years ago, we put that culvert in New, probably four or five years ago, and he'd send me a text, and he said, I know you told me, Paul, we'll fill up. He said, I'll probably be buying a culvert someday, but he's, his credit is they're trying to clean it out. But this is all over the state, I see this everywhere, I see this in counties across the state, I see this along state highways across the state. And, I just know what's gonna happen, they fill the ditches in, the culverts are gonna plug, and we're gonna have to replace it. Now, what do you wanna do? I did, I did a story, you know, three or four years ago in the paper, you know, we put something there, I call contractors, I did that when I was with Craig, I called him, I talked to him. But you just drive out there and you start driving around, and you just, there's a bear, okay, you know, so what essentially what you have. Is, uh, you know, let's take a farmer, he's got a farm here, okay, roadway's here. Roadways here and he's got a little ditch running here, culverts here, okay, so he, he fills this all in and he puts a little intake right here, okay? So that's a plan, so I mean, why, why do you do that? Okay, I don't wanna come in here and plan in rows around here and I don't wanna plan around here, I wanna come in here and just go, I wanna be able to do this, okay? Makes my farm a lot more efficient, plus I get to farm this. So that happens is, if you look at this, uh, have a view like this, is that they come in here and what, what, what once was a ditch here is now like this. And there's just a little intake thing here. Okay, and so, you know, so, and then you get this. So if this is high enough, this will completely fill in.
Completely, which I got half full.
Yeah. So, uh, you know, this, this, I mean, there are dozens of new ones, there are probably hundreds of these in our county alone.
Really?
This one here looks like, this is even in our right of looking.
Yeah, it's probably pretty close.
Yeah. Looks like it's almost touching.
It's on a level B roof.
Yeah.
They've graded up and we put the culvert in and they put this in there, I called the guy, you know, so I call people, you know. I mean, how, how hard do you wanna push this? Do you wanna go out in inventory all these, send hundreds of letters out? I mean, so these are citizens, but I just know what's gonna happen and, and so, you know, the guy comes in and he cleans this out, there's usually a big hole here, so you know, the right of way might be, you know, in here somewhere. I mean, it's problematic across the state, so you know, hey, we serve the, we serve the people, right? That's what we're here to do, okay?
All the people.
All the people, I know, I know. I'm asking for some guidance here, cause I don't have an answer for this.
I guess when I see them going, I ask, do I call you or top of the landowners, like could you lower that?
Yeah, and we did, and we do.
A pole line to where, you know, you can still have your catch base, but.
Well, what I encourage them to do is to move it down one platter width, you know, get it out into the field a little further, get it away from the culvert. You know, most of them are pretty receptive, but when you go out there and you see this and all of a sudden, I mean, they probably just spent twenty-five thousand dollars worth here and you're gonna have them come back and tear that all out, where do you think we're gonna land?
When you talk to some of the contractors that are doing the dirt work, what's their response?
Well, like the gentleman I business with.
Right, I mean, I was, I was with Paul and, and they're, they're unaware as to where it should be, they don't think that there is any rules or, you know, there's nothing in place.
Can we send something out?
They put it where they think it should be.
Yeah.
And so there, to me, they were appreciative that Paul calls them and says, hey, here's where we'd like it to be, and they go, oh, okay, then that's where I'll put them.
Yeah.
Can we send something out?
But that's moving forward, that's.
All of our farmers. I mean, if the mailer might save a lot of money for both sides.
Yeah, the property tax statements, but.
There you go.
We'll try.
We can try.
I mean, if, if, if what, if, if what Craig's saying is accurate, they just don't know.
Yeah.
I know, isn't that what, what you got Paul?
I don't know about that, cause I see the same contractor. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna be silent on.
Well, otherwise you can explain, you can explain the cost of repair.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, if we.
Well, maybe we work something up and you send it out, of course you send it out on the property tax statement and said, hey, I don't know, where's it at, that's why I'm looking for direction, you know?
Well, I'm just.
Maybe start, maybe start with it.
We're spitballing it at this point.
But we have, but we have, there was an article in the paper three, four years ago, I talked to a number of contractors three or four years ago, but I still see that popping up.
Then we need to remind them.
Well, you know it'll get opened if it's in the property tax statement.
But here's the other thing.
Good point, yeah.
It will.
People work on, uh, you know, there's some kind of consequence, you know, so we can let people know, but if there's no real consequence, you know.
If you wanna take the hard line, the consequence is, is when the culvert fills up, you've got, I mean, we've got a photographic, this is a big story, you know, we've got photographed aerial photos every year going back forever. And so you could just pull out aerial photos and say, well, this wasn't here and now it is here, now the culvert's plugged, we gotta replace it, do you wanna go that far? And send them a bill for the culvert replacement, ten or fifteen or.
Has there been any case law or other counties that have charged landowners, cause I see landowners, it's my land, I'm gonna do what I wanna do.
I know.
It's not my problem that the culvert filled up.
Yeah.
So I haven't, have you heard of this from other engineers or?
It's a sticky situation.
It really is.
It really is.
It's a sticky way.
Well, I think, I think you asked.
Cause it's done on private property.
Right.
Okay. The hole there, we didn't plug the culvert.
I would, I would say you asked for some cooperation.
That's what I've been.
Please don't listen to me.
That's what I've been doing, but I still see it, that's what I'm telling you, is it, is it three or four years ago, we had this, I had a column we, we put an article in the paper, we put pictures in the paper, we talked to contractors.
Well, we stopped and talked to the farm owner, land owner.
Yeah.
And said, cause you knew what he was gonna do moving forward, he even said, hey, eventually I'm gonna fill this ditch all in and all expectation, hey, when you do that.
Keep it lower than the culvert?
Right, here's what I'd like to see you do, and he was like, oh, okay, no problem.
So it's not.
Well, that's when he was standing.
That's when he was standing there with you, correct, correct.
And you hoped that he. So, you know, I mean, that's an option, just put a little flyer, a one page flyer with pictures of it. Most farmers would just say, you know, this is a bad idea and here's what's eventually gonna happen, you know, people, you know, say, well, no, it's never gonna plug up, well, you know, if you've got a ten by ten box culvert. And it might work for twenty-five or thirty years, but eventually it's just gonna start and then you got a few.
That's a big one.
Okay, you know, that little thirty inch beach shooter, I showed you there, I mean, that's probably a twenty-five hundred dollar deal, we still gotta buy a pipe, time.
Time.
Still, you know, and uh, so I don't know, it's just, it's one of those things that as I drive around and I see it, I just see more and more of it, and I made an effort a few years ago.
I understand.
I mean, Paul's absolutely right, cause we drove around, I guess you've noticed them in the past, but as Paul's, as we drive around and Paul's pointing them out to me as we're going. It's like, wow, there's more of them out there than what I thought.
Yeah, 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 so. So maybe that's the approach, is to tell them, you know.
I mean, is it, uh, would, is the backup, would the backup for water that can't drain away now be on this guy's side?
They started impounding water on their neighbors.
Yeah.
Well, so.
Yeah, think about it.
Not that I'll.
Thanks.
Yeah, my, my concern is it, is that when you.
I think sending out some pictures of what we're showing here and what's, what's the.
What's proper.
You know, and please, please.
What we'd like to see.
Yeah, please work with us, it's saving your property tax dollars.
Any of it comes ahead as far as where they get completely plugged up and the farmer.
I mean, we're, we're sitting in this, struggling all the time, trying to figure out what to say.
We've got some plug culverts.
Karen Ryan, that point where the farmer's called you and said, hey, come clean out your culvert where you said, hey, you've caused this, I mean, have we gotten that far yet?
You'll need a few chubbs, get busy.
I remember starting to, you know, four or five years ago, now it's everywhere, it is on state, I see them on state highways.
I gotta move along, I got people there.
So anyhow.
Don't know, don't know what to say.
But uh, just wanna make you aware of that.
I did drive in sixteen there, they have their sign, odd like all do it.
Yeah.
And there's really no notification until you get to a hundred and ten square miles, well, that's where need to, I guess, so be it.
Yeah, and I called them, made them aware of it.
Oh, there's nothing up by Fluswick or anything?
Last week sixteen's closed, but no, in a county, it is when you get a mile before.
Yeah, currently there's.
There's no early warning for these heavy loads.
Like by the record stern or something, so, yes, I, I called him, he said, we got it covered.
I told you too.
Not my project.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Have a good day.
Riley, you and your team wanna come forward here, we're running a little behind. And don't be bashful, guys. Gene's the only one that bikes.
Oh, come on.
Well, good morning, um. I'll introduce uh, everybody, I think the only new face uh, that you may not have met yet before is Brittany's uh, project manager, um, and also our construction manager, Isaac. He was here last time and uh, we uh, will be happy after this update to answer any questions, I think we're also uh, gonna take this opportunity to go over a lateral migration uh, study that we've done pertaining to the rivers within. The county and outside the county, just to kind of break it down in some of our findings and go over uh, specifically the Boyer River, we have a engineered drawing, I could, uh, that'll be in this packet as well, uh, showing the uh, Boyer River crossing, so. I'll pass it, well, actually, I'll just, if you don't mind, passing those in a circle and. Yeah, yeah, say pass them out yourself, um, yeah.
I can do it.
So uh, just a part of the quick update part, um, we are scheduled, uh, this may have came up, I mean, maybe a little bit after, maybe during the same time we had our um, last update meeting, but we are scheduled to go in from the I V in the October timeframe. Uh, for our state permit, so um, we're uh, still full steam ahead, but looking towards our, our actual set time date for the I U B permit hearing. Uh, for the county, uh, as far as easement miles required, we're sitting at eighty-seven point two seven percent. Uh, for the state of Iowa, we are sitting at sixty-eight point five nine percent. So far in the county, we have paid out four point five million dollars in easement payments, so that's going pretty well, uh, and we're, we're continually happy with our um, easement miles acquired in the county as well. We're, you know, wake up every morning hoping it's a hundred percent, but uh, we're happy that it's, that it's.
What's your highest county that you've got?
We have a few that are a hundred percent, um, you know, they, they may be a little bit different in mileage, uh, you know, we, we have a little bit more miles, um, I think, uh, we, we required twenty-one point four nine um, easement miles in this county and. We have counties that are a quarter of that, that we're uh, we're at a hundred percent on, um, and then we have some bigger counties, uh, like Potawatomi County where we've cleared ninety percent pretty handily, so. It's, there's some areas that we're doing really good in and um, there's some.
Where are you at in the other states?
I think we're pretty similar in all the other states, Brett could probably talk about Nebraska a little bit more, but.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we're trending almost exactly the same, Iowa's probably a little bit ahead of the other states, but for Nebraska, so I'm the project manager for Nebraska, we're sitting at about sixty-five percent. And kinda like the same with Iowa, each county's a little bit different, in one county, we're at ninety-two with the last landowner, it's just a company that we're working out the logistics of, and then other counties, you know, they might be at that fifty-eight percent. So that averages out to kind of be about the same, but it's just different across the board, but for all five states, we're trending about the same.
So South Dakota's about the same too then, cause I'd heard you're adding some gravel up there.
No, South Dakota, there's certain counties, again, that are probably a little worse than others, but they're right on par with Nebraska, like I said, Iowa's kind of our lead horse right now that we're trying to catch, but we're only a couple of percentages.
Where you start construction, where you have a hundred percent sign or go on your route?
No, they'll continue to work through getting all those easements, now they might start in certain spots first, just depending where the contractor's looking at for easement, but it just depends on how getting those.
If, if you don't get it done in South Dakota, but you start construction here.
Well, the thing with that too is you're gonna have to permit South Dakota first, because their hearing starts earlier, and each state, it's not gonna be like, start here and work from end to end. We're gonna have more specific contractor for each state and it's gonna be like a shotgun start, so each contractor will take care of their state, maybe they'll leak into the next state a little bit, but they kind of work all independently, they go each, almost as a separate project. And then they'll kind of come together for that tying at the end, so you don't need every state to be on the same level before you proceed.
So when you said that hearing is for South Dakota, that's before the one in Iowa?
Yes, I believe it's for September and the Iowa one was October, but I know they've been.
I'm just curious, are all the utility boards runs pretty similar?
I think they're a little different, so like North Dakota, their timeline is just a little bit quicker and they're actually going through some other hearings right now. And so they're gonna be ahead of the other states, Nebraska doesn't even have a state public utility board that's gonna be overseeing CO2, so now it's gonna be more at the county level. So each state, it has its own little differences and then Minnesota has the longest timeline, so each one, I think, has been a little bit different and that's why it's always unique when you have five states trying to work together on this, well, I guess not work together, we're trying to work with the five states and see how that works out. So I think South Dakota and Iowa are pretty similar in terms of it, from my understanding.
Yes, I'll forget them by the end.
I think that's the best way to do it.
So my, like what I'm trying to get my head around is, how can you start knowing that it could end at some point in time? Isn't that kind of a waste of dollars and cents if you don't have the whole project from start to end, ready to go rather than start and this one might be running into a problem and you're, you know? How do you, how do you make that work?
Well, they'll have some movearounds in any situation and that's just gonna be, sometimes you go to an area that might be, you know, a little wetter than others, so we might jump to the next spot, now that's a move around, so you'll have additional cost on that. But from an acquisition standpoint, you'll, we'll most likely get that situation where we do have it all acquired then, if not, we're just kind of working through it.
So if we have to go into the imminent domain, which you know is a lawsuit that's a little lengthy.
For sure.
So even if you have ninety percent of your uh, people signed up and you have that person right there in the middle that you just have not made a deal with. How do you start knowing that you're gonna get about right here and it's, you can't go any further, you don't have, you don't have a workaround.
Long court.
We, we, we skip them, we just move around and we keep going, and then whenever we do come to an agreement with them, we'll come back and fill that area.
And that's additional cost, but like I said, the nice part around here in Nebraska, for instance, there's a lot of roads at all the county, I guess, section lines, so you can move around them pretty quickly and then you're always going in on that right of way. So again, that is additional cost that'll be on the company, but still, they usually will have ninety percent, you're having long tracks that you'll be able to go through and come back.
Have you been able to visit with uh, the folks that are, are, you know, not wanting to have their land approached upon? Have you had a chance to actually sit down and visit with each and every one of them to know what your uh, problems are gonna be?
It just depends on a lot of the landowners, cause the problem that you kind of find is some of them just will not meet with you, so you can't even go over those issues. So I'd say we are continuously meeting with those landowners, so especially in Nebraska, we had one landowner would not meet, would not meet, and I finally got a chance to sit down with them. They came out with a shirt that said, no and hell no to CO2 pipelines, and the biggest problem was, he had a bunch of issues that he didn't know how we were going to address, but because he didn't sit down with us, he didn't know what we were doing for it. And don't get me wrong, it was a three hour meeting, then I sat down there with him, go through that, we drove his property and we actually got him to sign an easement that day. So when you talk about what's your biggest challenges, I'd say it's just people willing to sit down with us to go through those issues, cause we don't know them as a company, how to address them until they sit down.
Okay, alright, just kind of wondering how that was all going.
Yeah.
Good question.
Have you, have you been able to basically link up with everybody in Crawford then, I mean, and address their, or try to address their biggest concern?
Yeah, not being on the land uh, the, the land team, uh.
Yeah, but when you guys were here, your, your friend is.
Kaylee.
Kaylee, and so Kylie is the.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, like I told you that day, we were, or I told them, when Gene and I were, that Kylie, she had every question that I had, almost in every one of them, right off the top of her head and. I just felt that I wasn't getting any kind of a runaround with her, I mean, to me, if you get her in front of people, you're gonna have your, where you should be able to get a lot of these people.
And like I said, I don't think we've probably talked to all of them, cause sometimes their lawyers are saying, you have to go through us first, and that's what I'm saying, we, I would say, we know, we probably haven't talked to all of them, because when we hit that situation where they say, we'd like you to go through the lawyer, then that's where we kind of hit that wall. So everyone that's been willing to meet with us at this point, I would say we have, but I would not say we've met with everybody because of those reasons.
And I, I mean, as far as all the South Dakota, North Dakota, I'm curious about that, obviously, but.
I just had a question.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Paul, I didn't see you back.
We're asking, anyhow, and, and I just need to clarify, you mentioned the end around, would perhaps be the right of way, the road right of way, is it, is that correct or is it?
So I guess if we were going to be moving around, we would have our, you know, how they're moving their stuff around is across the road, so they would basically just be having their road use maintenance agreement, we've got the routes that were approved to use. And they would continue to go along that way, because they're not just using the right of way for construction, eventually they're, they're gonna have to cross the roads or maybe pipe is being delivered, those trucks are gonna use those roads regardless. But those are gonna be called out ahead of time, the contractors will know, they can only use the specific roads that we want, have videotaped ahead of time, so we know what it is, approved by the county and, you know, have put it in a big tape on or something along those lines.
Yeah, yeah, so that's just basically use of the roadway for construction purposes, not necessarily moving the road or the, the line into the.
Oh, sorry, no.
Parallely, you know.
No, it's basically, we have a lot of tie-in and Isaac will be able to explain this later, but basically just cap that pipe off where we would have to stop and then you cap it at the other end and then we can come back in, same route, no change, we would just have tying wells there. Isaac, I don't know if I.
Yeah, that's right, we, we, we'll move it on, we'll move all the equipment in the boat boy, so we'll pull up, move it around to the right of way, to the road, move it off load, then you do that.
And that's what I was talking about, Paul, it's the time that we're gonna take to load up all the equipment onto the trailers and then trailer over to the next position, drop them back off and continue on the, only on the right of way that we have.
No problem, I, you know, I kind of made it clear variety, you know, we're, we're prepared to help out, we're just, I think it's a little presumptive on our part to, to start doing road crossing agreements, entrances and so on and so forth, because we don't. to, to start doing road crossing agreements, entrances, and so on and so forth, because we don't know, you know, we only have a right away in the form of an easement. Okay, we don't have the underlying fee title to that property. So we just have an easement to maintain the roadway. And we give permission to utility to cross or parallel, uh, it's what's called a utility accommodation permit. So we do that quite often, uh, and that would be for a utility, you know, that the water, the electric, the telecommunications generally are the three that we, we would work with, but, but I always make it clear to people that we don't own that. We are just giving you permission to occupy the same space that we have a senior easement to, as long as that accommodation doesn't impact our use. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense.
So we've been a little cautious, because we don't know who the underlying title, you know, the, the underlying title owners, if they're supportive of it or not. And so we, we, you know, we're a little cautious of that.
Yeah, well, it's all for us, for us to get the road crossing permits, or what is gonna be required for our losses, so we know how to plan as a company. So for your road crossing permit, maybe there was a certain depth that was required, maybe you have something that's a little nuanced. That's why we like to get these ahead of time to one, you know, from an engineering standpoint, if we need to change anything. And two, you guys have specific road uses, so we can make sure that we're also putting that in the agreement, making sure that we're also accommodating. So, you know, sometimes you say, it might be a little early, but we say, you know, the earlier you plan, the more that we're not coming to you at the eleventh hour and saying, we need all of these things compared to us, hey, you know, we know you're not coming through yet, yeah, I would say get your permit from the utility board. But assuming that goes in, you've kind of got your ducks in a row. Assuming, that's what, I guess, we always just assume.
I get that, it just seems, you know, knowing that you're gonna have a court case ahead of you, and we're still going full steam ahead. I, you just seem so confident that that's gonna work out, and I just don't know how I can be that confident.
I guess, well, the way I look at it is, you know, right now we have the majority of it, and I hear, I think when you hear opposition, it's just that minority of the people that'll speak a little bit louder. I think when you get landowners signing up, sometimes they're not willing to come out and speak, even if they are personally for it because of some of the backlash. So I'd say our confidence comes from having that majority of the right away continuously signing up and continuously getting them. But like I said, we know that we have enough bull battles, we continue forward, and I don't mean to be presumptuous on that case, and that's why I said, we do, it's an if. But that's where our confidence comes from a little bit, I'd say.
You know, I couldn't imagine starting something, you know, there's a piece missing, but you're just gonna go around it for a minute, just feeling like we're just gonna come back and hook that up. It's just a matter of time, and I don't, don't know if I'd be that confident.
Yeah, I'd say some of it's just from the previous precedent that's been set by other projects, is what that's.
I suspect the guy that signed your check says, be confident and get it done.
It kind of understanding the template, like federal and state, they have a template, they have followed it in order to build big infrastructure projects. And understanding the template and following the necessary steps to, to make sure it's viable, make sure that all your Ts are crossed and your Is are dotted. If you're following the proper steps, there's, um, you know, there's always room to go above and beyond as well. But if the proper steps are followed throughout the process, you know, you can be pretty confident that.
It makes me nervous, if the government would say that as long as you guys do what you have to, you can take these people's property, don't worry about it, we'll get it for you.
Yeah, and that's not the intention at all, it, it's just, uh, there's a, there's a process for any infrastructure project, a, a process for.
And we're not planning on that at all, like I said, and each time we come in, we give you an update on the voluntary easements, and I, it's about.
Well, that's what I was leading to, for Paul asked his questions. You know, it's nice to know what's going on in South Dakota and all that, and we do care about our neighbors in Idaho and Shelby, obviously they're our neighbors and they're important to us. But, but, uh, our, our chief concern here is what's going on in Crawford. And I, I would like for you to be able to answer the questions to all these people, I mean, and I know that there's some that are probably ultimately resistant, period. You know, but, um, I, 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 I won't, I will tell you that you didn't, you didn't have me necessarily in your court until I had that nice conversation with Kylie there. I mean, and that really, I won't tell you that I have no questions yet, cause I still do. However, she really, I mean, I felt more confident that you guys weren't trying to do any kind of, no, no jigging and jagging. I mean, I felt like you're, okay, we're really working on a solid business deal, and you wanna be partners with everybody involved. And you know, I, I, the ones that you still have to work with, I think if, if we feel at the board, you're really busting your backside to, 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 to work with them. I think that that's probably.
Where you guys at with, sorry.
No, go ahead.
With Shelby, are you following the ordinance that they passed? Cause that's tied up in court right now, or are you waiting for that? Or is that gonna alter the path that is already determined?
So I know that's in current litigations, I'm not sure where our lawyers are at with that, so I guess I don't have much room to speak on that at this time. I'd say, one, from the rest of.
I, I, I do know it is, it, it's going through its legal processes right now, we're expecting a, a decision on that, um, hopefully soon. You know, sometimes those things tend to drag out a little bit longer than we expect, uh, but it has gone through its legal processes. I know we had a transcript available to us, what, you know, what took place, um, and I know we've been able to circulate a little bit of it, um, for answering questions. I can't personally answer them as good as, you know, a, a legal team can kind of pour, pour through them and, of that, what can be said in those transcripts. But there is, uh, the potential for us to have a, a pretty good understanding of that case soon. Uh, sooner rather than later is what we're hoping. I think they, when they got done with litigation, uh, they gave us, or the hearing, they gave us about a, you know, month or greater timeframe. But, uh, so.
So if their ordinance is hold up in court, I mean, does that change your route?
No, sir.
See, like, didn't, uh, Kylie say that if Crawford wins, you guys will be able to come to Crawford County?
Said you didn't have any reason to.
I'd have to go back and talk to Kylie and Kylie, cause I, I don't wanna speak against what they've said.
Yeah, and it, it, I, I think what, what they ran into is based on the ordinance, the constructability of the project is, we have to start over on a route. Um, so.
Yeah.
It, it comes down to who sets the route, is it the county or the state, and so that's what we're kind of looking at. So, um, and, uh, yeah, it, it does make it very difficult to construct a project with, um, some of the stipulations within the ordinance, if anybody's got a chance to look at it. Um, so.
And kind of going back to, if you're getting questions from landowners, I know they always are hesitant, but, I mean, I would just maybe give them Kylie's number, my number, and just say like, hey, I know you might not want to, but maybe sit down with them, so we can at least show our work a little bit, and that's where it says, I know you might not believe what I'm saying, but I'll at least show you in the federal regulations where we're following this, and that's what we always try to do with some of the handouts, is saying, even if you don't take my word, here it is in black and white at the federal level, that I have to do this, cause you know, some people are like, well, you just use a car salesman. It's like, let me at least show my work for you, that way you don't have to take my word for it, and that's what we always strive to do in a lot of these meetings.
Or maybe a telemarketer.
Yeah.
Well, it's been any of those federal regulations to change, I think they're meeting right in Des Moines at the end of this month.
Yeah, so one thing that we've been hearing recently is people saying, well, they don't think they have the correct C O two regulations in place for regulations for C O two pipelines, and that was following the incident in Mississippi. And if you look at the FEMSA bulletin that came out, actually have one page I can show you, cause I printed it out for myself. They actually, anytime there's an incident across the board, it's a FEMSA standard practice to say, we're gonna do an investigation of this. And from that investigation, we'll update regulations as needed. And they actually got back the FEMSA report back from the Sotarsia, Mississippi, and from that, it showed that the company involved, one, didn't have the correct geo hazard analysis done, because at that rupture point, it was where the river was going underneath. And like I said, that's kind of what we're gonna talk about later today, you know, plan perfect. But one, the company didn't do a proper geo hazard analysis, and their emergency response plan wasn't up to snuff. So what came from that was, FEMSA said, hey, we know that the geo hazards for all pipelines need to basically start meeting these criterias. And it's perfect, cause we're at the design phase right now, so we just took that bulletin, and we're working with GeoSynTech and TerraCon right now to basically do a geo hazard analysis across the entire board, and we can talk about that a little bit more when we get into this. But what that shows us, it'll say, here's your high, medium, and low locations, that say, from a high spot, best thing you can do is say, let's see if we have another route that we can avoid this very high sloped area, if it's a river crossing, how do we engineer something around it? Do you go back with your bore boxes, do you go deeper depth, something along those lines, and then the last phase of that is monitoring. So one, FEMSA put out this bulletin that says, you need to meet these new geo hazard requirements of working with a geotechnical contractor, saying not just those slopes, but I need you to look at some cars, which is like underground mines and whatnot, you need to look at all these. And we've incorporated that into our integrity management plan, and then the emergency response, we've already had Rod Dillon, who is our director of Land Report Affairs. He's been working around at a high level with some of the fire chiefs, I don't know when, which county's where he's at, but to my understanding, he's done that with everybody. Okay, if you haven't, I can always give you his number, but that's what he's told me, is he's either gone around and done it, or he's really close to there. But there's gonna be an emergency response plan that's rolled out before operations. I've heard the comments, well, it's like, we haven't had this training yet, we don't have the training until one, we can solidify the route, because it's gonna be specific to every county. And we don't wanna necessarily train someone that in a year from now won't even be on your guys', you know, board for the emergency response. So before anyone goes into operation, and like I said, this is what FEMSA says, you need to roll this out and have one in place, we're gonna meet with each county, do a training, and kind of go through the exercise of, this is what we need to do for the emergency response plan. We were gonna do that already, but this was highlighted from that report in Sotarsia, and you can kind of get additional details on top of that. Cause when FEMSA sees there's a problem, they wanna say, well, what, how can we rectify that? So the meeting in Des Moines, what they're doing is, they're saying, let's hear from landowners, what some of their concerns are, but FEMSA's an iterative process. They continuously update the regulations as we go. An example of that is following an incident in California, and this was like ten, twelve years ago. They looked at that incident and updated natural gas pipelines, and it's called the mega rule, if you wanna look it up. But they just instigated a bunch of new regulations for natural gas pipelines, and even though they're already built, they now have to adhere to those new regulations. Cause we've heard, why are you guys pushing forward while they're reviewing this? It's like, one, they're always reviewing it, FEMSA never stops updating the regulations. And even if they update it afterwards, there's precedent that shows we're still going to adhere to these. So that's why we're just trying to show people, they've already done that analysis of Sotarsia, we've already taken that feedback, and we'll continuously work with FEMSA. Sorry, that's a long word to answer, but it takes a little time to go through it.
I think we've seen kind of a study that what's the most important is the wind condition at the time of that eruption. And you had no control over, and none of us do, wind, you know, if it's a calm day, yeah, things good. But you got, have you been there once a windy day? That thing's, that's gonna travel really fast.
So for.
Also help dissipate a lot faster.
And that's what I was gonna say, when you look at your dispersion, what you're gonna usually do, at least from a modeling standpoint, is look at the worst case condition. And when it's not windy, that's when you're gonna say, your dispersion, because the mixing up of molecules is gonna be a lot less, so dispersion might take a little slower. As well as colder conditions, you have that, and that's why they've kind of done, one, the empirical study, the D N B, where they put the bomb on the thing, just to test it. And then also we have our modeling to look at those specific situations, so you're not wrong, you know, what happens when it's windy, but we actually would like the wind more to basically move it around.
There's actually three mega.
Yep, it, it was rolled out in three phases with it, and I think the most recent one was in twenty nineteen, if I'm not wrong in that. But it was from two thousand eleven was the incident in Mississippi, and I'm saying in California, and that was with natural gas. If you see there, there's, they are now updating, and most times what they're requiring these natural gas lines to do is they're having to re-hydro test and reset their baseline. If they can't meet those regulations, they're making them D rate, and D rate says you can't flow at your max capacity, you need to have twenty percent off your pressure, no matter what, until you meet the regulation. So it's things like that, that FEMSA says, we don't care if you're built, you're not grandfathered in, this is a safety issue, you have to do it. And that's, we just like to point that out, because, just because the pipelines in the ground doesn't mean we're not gonna be subjugated to anything FEMSA says. We continuously are regulated by this entity, and look how much money that's costing the natural gas pipelines. And so they're saying, one, yes, they wanna be a safety steward, but two, if you're hitting their pocketbook, they're also gonna be a lot more incentivized. And that's just kind of showing you, FEMSA doesn't mess around when it comes to these regulations.
Good, I got that one, I can read through it later.
That's a good one.
Like a little bit of reading.
That's like three or four pages, but it is a good read. And those are also incorporated, because anything that they find is applicable to natural gas, they'll also include in the C O two thing. So like I said, it's never, it's never a good thing when there is a problem, but they always review that incident, and they update it across the board. And that's why it is an iterative process for these regulations.
Can you do me a favor and make sure that when you are reaching out to our chiefs, to make sure that you're also reaching out to our E M A coordinator? Cause then he'll make sure that all the departments are included in that. Yeah, that's, I get it back there.
It's cause he's a, he's a familiar face, I, I, we might be able to track him down.
Yeah.
Well, we just wanna, we wanna keep all of, the whole team involved, you know?
I guess, right, I don't wanna, did you have anything more? I might just jump into.
Do you want to do something about the rivers?
And that's why, I thought it, I'd like to secure that.
And that's what I was kinda gonna jump into.
You know, last time we met, y'all brought this up, and I didn't know they had done this study, otherwise I could've talked to you about it then, I left and I called Kylie, oh, well, we did this.
So if you do have this drawing, bring it up, but I'm, again, I don't wanna go into too much background, but I think it's important. So anytime you go into the design, and so my background has all been integrity, so I've done integrity work for the last four years. It's running smart tools, I actually did the rehab digs, analyzed data, and I also was in charge, in charge of the damage prevention for our oil and gas company. So it's, it works out kind of well that I'm here, but in the first part of FEMSA, they say, you must have an integrity management plan. And one of the big steps of that integrity management plan is, you must do a hazard analysis across the entire board. And that's when I kind of talked about geo hazards is incorporated in that, as well as this lateral migration and scour. So what we do is, we're gonna go, and we hired a company to do this for us, just because they have the expertise and the data. They looked at the last thirty to forty years of data, I guess it was just thirty, cause it was nineteen ninety one, and they looked at each river specifically. And they said, what did it look like twenty, thirty years ago? What's it look like now? Are we seeing these changes? And what they're gonna do is rank these on a low, medium, and high. And like I said, for certain situations, what we're gonna do is you've got an engineering solution, which is where if we see there's a lot of erosion, if we see that banks moving this way or that, the best thing you can do is take your bore boxes, and you can see in the drawing at the very edges, and I know it's kind of hard, cause it's dotted right there and there. Those are the bore boxes where the drill is actually gonna go underneath, under, and up. If we see that there's a, a potential erosion problem, what you're gonna do is you're gonna take those, and this is your engineering solution, and you're gonna push them back. And what that's gonna do is, you're gonna get out of that potential lateral migration zone, and then also that's gonna increase your depth of cover. So that's your engineering solution, but what they're gonna do is, they're gonna flag that. They're gonna say, sure, we've had an engineering solution, we might bring that from a high to a medium, or a medium to a low, and then from there, we're gonna put it on a monitoring schedule. And so FEMSA says, in your integrity management plan, first, first baseline, do your general analysis and highlight. And then the second part of that integrity management plan is continuously monitoring it. So we do flyovers every two weeks, and one, FEMSA requires you to do it on, I think every three week basis, we're doing it every two weeks. But what they're doing on that flyover is a couple of things, is somebody digging near the right away, are we seeing any potential problems? Did that river come up more than we expected? And they're constantly getting information, so we can get that feedback. It's not, well, we put the pipeline in the ground, we'll see what happens, it's no, I'm actively looking at it with the eyes of the pilots going over it. They know what they should be looking for, they say, look, this is a medium on our integrity management plan, let's make sure that we're giving them feedback. And if we see that there's higher rivers or something, then maybe we'll have someone actually go out there and put some boots on the ground. And then in most situations, if it's gonna be a high risk, anytime there's a flood or anything major like that, no question, it automatically triggers people to go out there and just be checking on it. So it's all about this continuous feedback loop that we're getting from our system. So for the Boyd River, we'll talk about that, about this one specifically. Boy, sorry, I have a void one in mind, I always mix those up. This was actually identified as a low risk from our analysis, and GeoSynTech is the company that did this for us. So at a low risk, and they kind of go through what a low risk is, a low risk, just so I don't just say things that don't really make sense, are the low likelihood for pipeline to be exposed due to hydro technical hazards within the design life of the project. So it's a low risk, but we understand there is still a risk with that, so we'll still be monitoring it, but not as a situation if it was a medium or high. It's not something that we'll have to go out on a regular basis and have boots on the ground, but our planes will still fly it over. But a low risk doesn't indicate that you need to do any additional engineering to move that back. And on that drawing itself, you're gonna see. Yeah, it's sixteen hundred feet.
South side is sixteen hundred and forty eight, from the north side, from the center of the river, and it's eight hundred and forty eight.
And, and also just to get some additional information, you're gonna see these dots that have some white and black in them, there's about four of them. Those are bore holes, so we actually go out there with a contractor, and they will get a sample of the dirt. And so they can say, okay, you know, this is what we were anticipating, now we have four data points that we can show as we're going through with that drill. Do we anticipate any other potential hazards? And again, that's a geotechnical contractor that tells me that, cause I don't know how to read soil data, I have no integrity of, but they're gonna tell me what that risk is. And then we're going to basically change anything as needed.
So that's bore hole there.
Yes.
The person who owns that parcel, they have, you have that much of their property in the easement that you can bore into, you know, cause.
That's just additional temporary workspace, we'll be down. Yeah, no matter what, when that goes back, we just have a fifty foot.
Does that look like that was quite a piece of weight?
Yeah, and, and we pay them for all the damages, all that as well.
And sometimes, so those bore holes are either done, or if they are more out of our temporary workspace, that's something we work with the land. Cause one, they're gonna get those damages, so I actually, like I said, I'm doing the geo hazard analysis across all five states, and I'm running the GeoTech crews right now. So as long as we're seventy five feet off the center line of the pipe, just because you don't wanna be drilling right where the pipe's going, you know, that hole, we're gonna get that good data. So even if they say, hey, I don't want you there, can you move it back? That's fine, in a lot of situations, we're talking to those landowners and. That's fine. In a lot of situations, we're talking to those landowners and saying, is this spot okay with you? Are you okay with what we're doing? Last year, we were near harvest, and they said, do you mind pushing this back to November? And I'm like, yeah, that's fine. That's not something we need to do now. But that's a conversation that takes place with each and every landowner.
Have you done that or not yet?
I do not know. I have a list on my computer, and if they told me no, that's fine, because I just see there's four there. And your biggest concerns are always going to be on either side of the river, because that's when your soil changes most drastically. But as long as you have your sample from one side, even if we skip over this and have the other three or four, that's usually enough information for them to say, we're good, continue. And again, the biggest thing to look at is the river itself over thirty years. You know, if I look at it for one to two years and I don't see any change, it's not really a good sample size. And that's why you want to look at it for thirty years of satellite imagery, that can really see how much has it been changing. And that's where a lot of your risk is associated with lateral migration or scour. But like I said, the biggest thing from an engineering spec perspective is you would go deeper or move it back. And then, like I said, you're just going to monitor it. And then in a lot of situations, they're going to do what's basically boots-on-the-ground survey. And this isn't every spot, but what they'll do is they'll actually go through a probe every fifty feet and say, I know we're supposed to be at this depth, are we still at this depth? And then if we would see there would be an erosion problem, say fifteen years from now, what they do is they'll go in there and they'll armor the bank. You actually go and like, you'll put some riff raft or something like that, where they actually arm it, where you won't have that erosion. So again, this isn't a one-time engineering, you continuously monitor it because of that integrity management plan. So like I said, it's, it's not as simple as, while we've done the analysis, it's more, well, now this is the start of this lifetime evaluation of these locations, and it's never ending. And that's why, if you ever look at the budget, and that's why my whole career has been integrity, it never stops. You have more money, go do more integrity work, because it's only going to be better for the asset.
So on a low-risk river that you mentioned, like the Bueller, how deep under the river do you put the pipe?
I believe we're at twenty-five feet right now.
Under the river?
Yes, sir. I think we're fifty-something feet underneath a railroad like that.
Fifty under the railroad?
Fifty-something, yes, sir. I don't have the ground in front of me, fifty, fifty-five.
You can see some of that's going to be based on the elevation of what you start. So you start on a pretty much higher elevation, you got to go down and meet your radius to actually get to the river levels, kind of dictating some of this depth, depending on where you're at, or road, or railroad. Just because, like I said, they're going up there, sure, shoot the survey and saying, this is where I need to start, this is where I need to end. And probably your critical point is going to be either your river or your railroad. And that's really going to drive all of the other designs behind this. Because you might say, well, this railroad is deeper than the other one I saw. Well, is there a river associated nearby that they have to meet those requirements? And there's different things that are going to drive that situation.
And some of my other concerns, I mean, obviously you're evaluating the Bueller. But you know, we've got the Soldier River, which is actually the fastest river in western Iowa.
So it's funny you say that.
Do you have any, okay, go ahead, man.
Sorry, I didn't mean to pitch you.
No, go.
So that was actually a little bit of a high risk.
And that's what I was wondering.
And so, and that kind of shows you too, it's like, you said it was one of the fastest one. And because of that, you're seeing that it was actually given that ranking, which is good validation, because, one, it's different than someone else doing their evaluation, and then also local knowledge. So with that, it's going to become, they're looking at our depth there, they're looking at our erosion. And either, hey, is there a potential open cut this, if, if, you know, if the, no, the Army Corps would allow it. So we're looking at the solution there to make sure that we were, one, since it's high risk, it's going to be on the monitoring right off the bat. Low risk isn't going to get as much attention as that river would, but it's already got the high risk associated with it. So we're seeing what we need to do from that perspective, of either lengthening that, or if we open cut it, I mean, on the time of year too. Because if that river's flowing, there's either, you're going to have to push that off till later, or end up born at the end of the day.
Well, that's one that's known, when we get floods, that it'll change its course.
Let me give you just some numbers, if we do bore it between ten and fifteen feet deep at the bottom of the river, at the lowest point, we're going to be two hundred feet both sides from top of bank. So top of bank, top of bank, that's what I got, is a hundred feet wide. So it'll be two hundred feet this way and two hundred feet that way, and that's where we'll start. So to get down, to get down to ten to fifteen feet deep underneath for the most part of the river.
But a big thing is just looking at, like I said, the geo-hazard analysis is looking at your stress and strain of your pipe based upon actual slope. So one, not only does this first desktop study rank it as a high, but what it next does is trigger boots-on-the-ground survey when we have availability. So they say this is high risk, now go out there and actually give me more data on it. So we'll continuously evaluate. If it stays high, that's fine. But what we're going to do is because it's high, we'll have to get data every so often and feed it into our, basically, our risk monitoring system to say, hey, look, this erosion, this depth of cover might have changed X amount of feet. Let's go out there and do something, or, okay, it's not an issue, but we're going to continuously monitor it. So everything is adjustable, and it's all based upon feedback loops from the system. And like I said, I think it's hard sometimes if you're not in integrity work like I've been, to understand, how much information are you getting from this pipeline? It's actually a decent amount as you continuously do these analysis. It's not put the pipeline in the ground and, you know, pray. It's no, put the pipeline in the ground and continuously watch it.
And let me ask you just about, you know, non-waterways, their minimal flow, or, you know, I, I, obviously Riley's been beat to death to me by this, not even on phone calls, because I'm, I'm concerned about them lowering over time. Because you guys aren't going to be out here for just five, or a year, or five years. I mean, we're looking for a long time to probably fill up North Dakota. But, uh, so I worry about, you know, waterways and, and stuff like that are out there. I mean, probably not a waterway as much, but anything that where you, you get, we get to where there's a large drain basin that comes down towards the Soldier or the Bueller or something like that, that may not run, run wet all year long. But them are the ones that are probably more, the guys are going to come in and disc them and clean them back up. Well, that could be lowering it all the time constantly. How, how low do you typically go below that?
So just your drainage in your fields?
Not necessarily just the drainage in the field, but you know, I mean, creeks that'll dry when, when we're not in the rainy season, you know, I mean.
So if we're going in on just-
It'll be back in timber typically. You know what I'm getting at?
Yeah, so if it's just a dry creek, I mean, what, are we still twenty feet below any creek or twenty-five feet below? Do you know?
No, I'm just talking about creek.
Or even-
Creek-wise, yes, we're, we're, we're-
I think you mean like a dry creek compared to-
You're just talking about like a-
You get creeks that'll dry up during the summer, you know, but they'll run in the spring, and, and if we get fall rains or you, 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 you know what I'm talking about. Those are the ones that, you know, might be in a hayfield or something, and you know, you get, you see what I'm getting at?
When we come through, it'll be a minimum, a minimum of sixty inches. And five feet at a minimum, okay? So now, let's just say, negotiation with a landowner, he wants us, you know, sixty inches across his property, we'll probably drop it another two, three foot on, you know? And unless it's determined by the DNR or Army Corps engineers, our engineers have just designed it as well. But typically, our footprint would be five feet below, federal reg is, I think, four feet. So we're going an additional foot from the pedal.
And I'll also say, so like I said, at my previous company, there was groups that were solely dedicated to going out there and, you know, digging up the pipeline and kind of reviewing the data. There was also one associated with just making sure and maintaining that the cover. So let's say ten years from now, they'd go out there, they go into the farm field, and they see that our depth's a little lower than we want because of the things you're saying. There's a new campaign to actually just lower that pipeline. So they'll have to dig back, you know, a hundred feet, a hundred feet, because you can't just lower it one spot. But they'll go through that process. And like I said, that's something that we're paid for again, because we understand that's going on your property, and it's our asset that we're lowering. But that's where we're getting that information, because one, if we're seeing a drop of depth of cover, we're going to want to lower it ourselves. And it's for reasons, like you said, you might just have things changing in there that weren't out there when we were actually installing it. So you have whole groups of integrity that will be involved with either lowering, or like I said, evaluating.
Well, that's my, that's my big concern here is, you know, we're obviously worried about today's farm.
For sure.
But, you know, just like cows, you know, and Dave are farmers. And when their kids or their grandkids start farming, I mean, you know, you might be here that long. And, and that got, got lowered, well, and they don't even think much of it, and they go out and drive, start putting some fence in or something like that, and they're boring some holes, and that pipe's close all of a sudden. That's, that, that's what I'm thinking about is, where are we at in twenty-five to fifty years? You know, that's-
And I think that's what you should be thinking about, because the pipelines I used to work on were put in the nineteen sixties. So, and that's why it isn't just one time and done, it's a one-time watch and adjust.
But if you're doing, I mean, you asked for all that, if you're continuously, I mean, I'm sure you can, you get sensors that'll tell you how deep your pipe is right there.
Yeah, well, and what they actually do is they have those actual, one, to sensor, but then two, they'll probe rods. So you know, just a metal little, you know, rod that they stick in the ground, they need to hear it. And I guess they'll do that every fifty feet when they're doing our surveys. And they don't do that every year, I think every five years, might be something like that. Because soil erosion isn't going to happen like that, and if it is, that's an area that's a high risk already. And so they might be going out there sooner than that. But we had, like, I used to dig around where the Mississippi was, and man, that thing would just come out, and the soil changing there was ridiculous. So they'd have to do a lot of extra work there to lower it if needed. But it's something that they at least knew was a problem and washed for. And back in the day, two feet was the standard depth of cover for a lot of these. So you'd have no till agreements, you'd have situations like that. And that's why in my previous company was, what could we do to basically manage our, you know, our risk? And they're like, I wish we could have our pipe at four feet. And that's just because of when you look at agriculture, when you look at what's going on, it's nice to have that depth of cover where you're not impacting any agriculture, and you have, and if there would be some sort of loss, it's not an immediate threat. You have time to go out there, get those measurements, and lower it if needed.
Is this map current as far as the route and, and the shut-off valves? At one time, you had about pumping stations, another time you had brought up Gene, uh, pig launcher. Yes, we kind of got-
They don't like that.
Whatever. I like pig launcher. All I did was launch pigs.
But we didn't really get a-
Oh, you guys don't like that.
What was going to happen?
There, there will be no pump station, uh, as of this moment. I, I think that, that pump station's, um-
Up and I did.
Yeah, it's-
And the pig launcher?
Well, yeah, the-
The pig launcher and the pump stations are going to go hand in hand. Because you're either having a pump station likely where you need additional pressure to push you, or it's where some lateral sometimes come together. And a lot of those times, whenever you have a long distance, you put a pig launcher there, because you don't want to do these long hundred-mile stretches of your smart tool analysis. So they'll put a pig launcher there because you already have the footprint. And a pig launcher is literally just a trap that's going to come out, you can pull out the tool. It's really no different than a pump station, because you have to have an above-ground pertinence.
So like, this map is right, then it would be eight to ten inch for two valves.
Uh, yes, yeah, then one-
That is being discussed that could change.
Yeah, and I think the, what we had discussed where the, uh, yeah, the, uh, the pig launcher would be, is where transitions from eight to ten inch.
So I can get an answer for it.
I was going to say, I thought I seen that where you had it. I always thought we were eight in Crawford, but now I've seen where there was a stretch that came in at ten inch, and is that where your nail would be then?
Yep, yep, that's exactly.
They don't squeal like the old, that kind of-
So it's a misconception, they, they always joke back in the day that it was called a pig, because they actually put a pig in the line or something. But they don't squeal, so I used to run smart tools. And one, cleaning tools are going to be your most common form that you put in there. But of course, CO2, the line is not at a situation where there's so much residue, where you run the cleaning tools every, you know, six months. For us, it might be a year, two years, and that's a foam pig that goes in there and runs the line. Or a smart tool, what you're looking at is basically a computer that is going inside there. And it's got basically ultrasonic technology that's going to be measuring your wall thickness. It's going to have these little caliper arms is what we're calling it. So if there's an issue, it's down, it clicks, and we know exactly where there might be some ovality. And it's not making these squealing sounds. If you're standing right above it, you might hear it as it, as basically the little odometer wheels go across the wall, you might hear. But it's not whee as it goes through. And that's, people have said that we're going to hear the pigs every time, and those are years across. And when I'm standing right above where I know it's going to be, it's hard to hear. And that's why we'll have instrumentation to pick it up. So to say that you're going to be hearing tools, I would, if anyone ever was able to hear the tool, I'd be very surprised just because of the years apart that that ran from an integrity management plan and the fact that it's hearing. The only time you can really hear it that well is when it actually comes above ground. And again, you're just going to hear the clicking as it slowly rolls through. It's going to be less loud than that long.
Do you have some more? Gene, you have more? We're going to get pushed on in time.
That's the deal with how much water it's going to take to operate. That, that's been some talk in some other counties and other states about the amount of water that it takes to actually operate it. We thought it was just a testing, but it actually is operated, correct?
No, so when you look at additional water that's going to come, there might be additional water at the ethanol plant. And they said that might just be what the ethanol plants using today, maybe a ten percent increase. And that's what they're seeing as on average. We don't need water to operate our system. We will test it with water from a hydrotest perspective, and sorry, like Kylie's already went through this, but that's where you, we know what our pressure is. We use water to overpressure the system to show that it can meet, like, if you can hold a pressure a hundred and twenty-five percent above what you're running at, at a maximum, then we know that it's going to be good long-term. So you do that at the beginning, and then it never sees that pressure again unless you were trying to re-establish it. But no, you only want to do that once on the system, then it's just going to be CO2. Yeah, well, it depends from different locations. We have different points along the line that we're trying to contract with, and we're still working through that process.
Ty, can you open it up to a citizen?
Yeah, that's what I was going to do. Kim, did you have, you know, something that you'd like to run by him quick? Anybody else? Zoom? Where'd everybody go? There's nobody on there.
Hello?
Okay, is this Bonnie?
Yeah, yeah, it's Bonnie Walt from Milford.
Okay.
Um, yeah, um, I just want to clarify something that you said way back at the beginning, that, uh, well, first of all, we're part of the twelve percent that haven't signed. Uh, mainly, well, it's land destruction safety issues, but also the principle of the thing that this is a violation of the, of our protection from eminent domain, private property rights. And this is not like any other pipeline, it is a for-profit pipeline that you would be accessing our property for private prof, profit, and we're really opposed to that. But anyway, I just want to clarify, you said, uh, that their attorneys aren't letting the landowners talk to you, and that's not necessarily true. Uh, we are part of the Iowa easement team, which I'm sure you've heard of. It's a legal co-op, and we have all signed on with DOMINA Law in Omaha, and our attorney is Brian Jordy. I'm sure you've heard of him. And anyway, he has not forbidden us to talk to you. We can talk to you anytime we want. He has told us if we don't want to deal with the land agents, to direct, uh, you to them, and, and he will, he will be their spokesperson. But I just wanted to let you know that we have not, in this past, what, over a year and a half, we've not met our land agent. But a couple of weeks ago, we decided we would, uh, meet, because we wanted to see what you were planning to do on our, on our property. So, uh, we made an arrangement with, to meet him in Spirit Lake at one-thirty in the afternoon. And we were at our appointment at one-thirty, and at two o'clock, he still was not there. So we left, and we found out later that he showed up forty-five minutes late. And so I just wanted to point that out, that it's, it's not, or you're refusing to talk to him and stuff. This goes two ways, and also, don't say our attorney is forbidding us to talk to you, because that's just simply not true.
I guess, sorry, ma'am, I didn't mean to say that he is forbidding you to talk to us. It's restricting us to make first contact with you. Basically, from our understanding, if it's a DOMINA tract, we have to give first the documentation to Jordy or DOMINA, and then they will relay that to you. We can't just reach out to you first and say, would you like to meet? You talked about not being in contact with us for multiple months, and it's for that reason. We've basically been instructed to, if it's a DOMINA tract, we, we don't want to go through that process. And we basically, by you signing up with DOMINA, have said, please stop contacting us. We, again, we'll meet with anyone. I actually met recently with someone in Nebraska.
Excuse me. That's not true either. That is not true. DOMINA, DOMINA landowners are being contacted constantly by land agents, constantly. That's just blatantly not true. And that's all I, that's all I wanted to say about that. Thank you.
Ma'am, did you have the name of the land agent? I can-
Yes, he's, he's, he's in Dennison. I'm sure you know who he is.
There, there's a lot of land agents, but I'll, I'll go from there.
Thanks, Bonnie. Is there anybody else in Zoom land other than Bonnie? See Bonnie up in the corner there. Oh, now she's gone. Yeah, well, thank you. Okay, well, then that's kind of covers it. I sure appreciate you coming. That was a very, very good information. I appreciate that. I mean-
Yeah, and always thank you all for having us.
If you could, go out and try to get some of Bonnie's concerns rectified, we'd sure appreciate that.
For sure. Obviously, if she's willing to be with us, I can come out personally and call Kylie or somebody, so.
Greg Kylie with you. Like I said, she's, I mean, you did a good job off the top of your head, doing, I appreciate that when you guys are, not to say that neither one, neither one of you actually do, I mean, but just when you guys have all the answers right there.
It's nice because she's my counterpart, and I'm in Nebraska. And like I said, if you guys have specific integrity questions, I'm more than willing to come out and talk about those, because I could talk much longer than this just- Cause I could talk much longer than this just about, you know, those smart tools, the, the information I do, I'll get them for you. But there is a, a much larger process from the integrity side that we can go into if interested. I usually don't start with that cause it bores you. And as you see, just talking about River Scour kinda leads us back into this little thing of why we're doing that. From the FMSA side and integrity side. So like I said, as questions come up, don't hesitate to reach out to Kylie. And usually, like I said, if there's specific integrity questions, I come out just because of my background.
Thank y'all. I hope y'all have a good rest of the day.
Yeah, you too. Drive safe. All right, next on the agenda, we have Rachel Burns. Did she leave?
During her appointment, uh, medical examiner investigator.
I'm making a motion to appoint Rachel Burns, higher EMS as a medical examiner investigation investigator.
Second.
Thank you.
So it's been moved and.
Two other ones, just not everyone always wants these.
Thank you. Been moved and seconded. Did uh, Rachel Burns be appointed medical examiner investigator? I actually had a call about that. And they wanted to know if she was the medical examiner, but no, she's just an investigator on his behalf. Yep, that is correct. Is that correct, Rachel? You will just be an investigator? So, thank you. So, thanks. So you just investigate on, on behalf?
I don't do anything right now.
Well, you will just investigate on behalf of like Dr. Krab.
Yeah, so the way it works is county level, there's a medical examiner who has to be a physician. And then you can appoint medical examiner investigators underneath that. So you've got three already. So I would make four.
And the examiner appoints the investigator?
Yes. I mean, on paper. Oh, so.
And he calls them as needed.
The way that Dr. Krab told me we're dispatched is by the CCMH switchboard, which. I thought was weird that the comm center's not dispatching it, but um, CCMH switchboard will call our cell phones. He didn't specify to me how we're gonna decide which investigator goes when. There are times I believe when he's able to not go. But that probably depends on the specific ME or if they're out of town or whatever.
Each situation will be.
Yeah, you can have just an MEI.
Theramatics will talk to him personally.
Right.
Over the phone.
Right.
And, and the situation won't necessarily warrant uh, an investigator to come out and anytime a. Unattended death occurs and they need an investigator.
Kinda works like our.
To rule out all play of any guy.
Yeah, so it's any child, whether that's hospital or non, any infant, any child is investigated. Any uninten- unattended death, so out of hospital, it's either out of hospital or out of nursing home. Um, sometimes the nursing homes want it done anyway for like cremation certificate is my understanding, but um. Those are the ones that.
Well, I, I'd, I'd explain it as that works kinda like when we send somebody to arson investigator, they kinda do something. They're not the fire marshal. So they don't have the final say, but they can give him information. So kinda works like.
What this county pays, yeah, you know, like I'm not a top, like this is a hundred dollars.
Who determines?
What's that?
Who determines whether they need an autopsy?
The MEI probably in conjunction with the ME. So there are certain cases that are required autopsy. Um, and then there are recommended autopsy times and then we do this.
You're the M, you'd be the M.
So there's this twelve page form that you complete and then it's actually completed online, but um.
You complete it every time?
Yes, every time.
Every time.
So then there's different categories. So like the means of death might drive whether there's an autopsy or not. Basically, I'd say Dr. Krab has the final call, other than the required ones, which again would include children's homicides suicide.
Alright.
I appreciate all your input and your willingness to take this on and when you say the pay is really high and uh.
You're retiring early on yet.
But as far as what we're working with right here today. You know, I think that's probably somewhat out of wheelhouse. So I think we have a motion and a second on the table to appoint. Make your appointment and.
I just wanted to make sure that the board had, you know, since I had that, questions asked me, I just wanted to make sure that we got.
And that's why I'm here in person, because if I just send you the paperwork and you have a question, then.
Well, I think, is there any other questions? Questions been called, all in favor state so by saying aye. Aye, any nays? Ayes have it.
Rachel, thank you.
Thanks. So I just need the minutes to read that I've been appointed and then I send that in. Here's a letter from Dr. Krab. I don't know if you guys need that or not.
We're good. You've been appointed then.
And then I sent the invoice from.
The minutes will be available after next approval.
Perfect. Thank you.
Do you have the actual invoices for your, your hotel?
Uh, yeah.
Please, yeah.
Thanks Rachel. I just got it, I just, just some information for everybody at the board. I just got a text that the building for the shelters, that's not till next week, no. Cause of the moisture. We'll, we'll postpone for moisture as we need that.
Alright.
Okay, next up on the agenda is uh, city center IT server room RFP. Mr. Jake, come on in.
Good morning. Kinda clarify a couple of things, cause it was dropped on my flap two weeks ago. Well, um, as far as when I came up here to address the uh.
Oh, sorry ma'am.
The licensing issues that we encountered with um, the IT um. Uh, security RFP, if you will, okay? So um, I'm just asking for a little bit of clarification regarding when I'm writing this, because uh, the construction of the. Okay, um, so my first question is, is anything being considered outside of this room? Um, like, is that, I heard that there was, I, I got word that there might have been a third RFP involved that would might be. For just overall building, is that, no, there's no.
Back to my knowledge.
Okay, so, alright, so what that means is I would, I'd like to modify the entryway to the basement. To allow me to bring any equipment. Um, if ADA cup, ADA access would cover it, so to speak.
Probably doing that in ours? That's what he's talking about, the third RFP.
Yeah, that's.
That's always been in the original plan to have that.
Right, okay.
Always in the original because that's a requirement.
Sure, okay. Yes, then, then I don't have to worry about making sure it could make its end that, cause it, because that.
There, but there goes the chicken and the egg part of it. So exactly what we get ours done to get your equipment in it. So there, there's the, that's the catch that we've run into at every.
Can you get your equipment in through the current door that is there?
It would be difficult.
They don't know for sure.
Right, I mean, there's, there's some equipment that like a switch, yeah, I could easily pass it through. But if we get down the road. You know, in a couple of years, it would be nice to make sure that.
And a couple of years, so I mean, to get up and going.
To get up and going, probably aren't gonna need it. The only thing I could think of is maybe the cabinet that Corey is word. This might be difficult to get through that doorway.
So, would it make it easier if that was part of yours to have, to modify the door? To uh, and that's why we, we, we need to have the conversation.
Yep.
To, to avoid the chicken and the egg uh scenario that you can't get yours in because the city, the county hasn't done their part.
Right.
I would be perfectly comfortable with you having to have that because that's part of the basement area, which is your area.
Sure.
Uh, that that door gets done along with yours.
Yep, and the, these are reasons why I'm here to find out.
Reason, I'm glad you're.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, okay, so that tells me that, okay.
Is that, I mean, these doors are like your standard thirty-two's or whatever. I mean, have you been able to get all your equipment in through these doors so far, right?
Well, like, so for the purposes of like rolling equipment in, like, when I do a, if we, let's say we, we get down the road and we wanna turn that into. Um, an emergency operations center, you're gonna wanna put more equipment in there to be able to, to handle that load, okay? Um, or.
And the door would be an even more.
Yeah, yeah, so, but the point that I'm trying to get across is, is that.
You mean click your servers or what are you talking about?
Well, if we decide to put more equipment in there beyond what we're putting in now, okay? That's the reason why we ordered a cabinet through the original RFP that I did, so that we could, you know, load these items in there. I mean, they've got a couple of servers already. They're not rack mounted servers. They're just desktop servers that I'm probably gonna just set in that cabinet while we're done, okay? But further down the road, we may wanna replace those and get a little bit more built towards that cabinet and start doing rack mounted stuff, okay?
Down the road, we'll have it done if it's in ours, but, but what we're trying to do is give you what you need. If you want that in your RFP, it's all the same.
Yeah, I mean.
I just assumed you did.
Okay, so then I'll, I'll, I'll write that in there. If that, if that pleases the board, yeah, okay. Okay, so then I, I'll make sure that's, that's covered in the IT server RFP as far as the widening of the entryway to the basement. Okay, um, second question that I have, um, is the generator for the building. Is that gonna be something that goes in act, in the aftermath with the construction of the building? Or is that something that needs to be looked into this RFP as well?
Gene, what, what RFP did you think that would go in?
Well, the generator, so let's uh, figure out exactly whose purpose that is for. Is that yours?
It's gonna be carried.
And it'll have to take care of the refrigerator too though.
That's what I was gonna say. It's carried between both.
Alright.
The public health and.
And freezer, whatever.
Yep, for all their, um, the vaccinations and whatnot.
And where will it be located?
Um, so I talked with Dwayne about possible location of that generator. And right now, I know DMU is putting in a platform to replace the pole that's sitting now down near the parking, the. Parking lot between Computer MD and the basement entryway, okay? Um, apparently that pole collapsed a couple of months back and that's why they're trying to get rid of it in its entirety. There is, it looked like there was a kind of a cement pad, um, almost not.
Down there in the bargain area?
Yeah, it would be, it's gonna be right, if you go over there, you'll see a green kind of.
I've seen it.
Yes.
And I've seen all the little orange flags.
Yep, it would probably be just a little bit further north of that, that transformer or whatever equipment DMU's putting in. So, um, that's where.
You don't worry about anybody hitting that.
Yeah, pretty much. I mean, they would have to literally be going for the transformer to hit.
So, so Dwayne said that the generator is going to be.
Well, he recommended that would be a good spot for it, okay? You guys can make a decision if you want that in there.
Outside?
Yes.
Generator's gonna be outside, we'll see.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's standard procedure.
And um, whatever.
They run on fossil fuel apparently, so we need to have a lot of air.
Yeah, I've seen her, that's mine already.
We uh, uh, need to put some post, protective posts.
Yep.
So whoever does that in their RFP, make sure you got some of them or more of that.
The generator is gonna be in yours and we would have the protectors and the whole shebang. Because that's where it gets dicey if you've got somebody doing this, but then it's not really our, what we're doing. So it just makes sense to have that.
Okay.
In yours.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
Keep it moving.
Well, our past history of generators, we're not gonna see one for a lot of years, so.
Unless we pay a million dollars each.
Okay.
So what happens? What is it, when it, when will we be able to order the generator so we'll have an idea?
Well, that's gonna be, we'll be able to check with Waco, they might be able to get you one. Cause I think having one that's a residential grade, I don't know, will we need thirty-two KW or what do you think we'll need? I mean, thirty-two KW, you power the whole damn building.
It's all gonna run.
So, I mean, yeah.
If there's a storm and they had to be in there to take care of something or whatever.
I mean, I'm, I, I mean, honestly, straight up, I have a research generator to tell you to know if I was getting a generator.
Do you, I mean, do you really, do you need to really know what, if you need a generator in yours? Or, cause your stuff will all be hooked up to the panels in the electrical room. And that's where the generator will hook up to. So I mean, your RFP is not, is it really contingent on that generator being there before you start?
Well, I know that the idea was, and.
Is there a special switch that you need to keep power so you don't charge?
Well, that was the other thing that I'm kinda providing here is, so in that basement, there's a collection of switches throughout the building, okay? Um, that run, that ran the pharmacy and the dentist and, and whatnot.
I don't mean a light switch, I'm talking about a power switch.
We're, we're on the same, yes, that's what I'm mentioning here. They, so you could actually shut off the power to a specific area of the building through that big old.
The automatic transfer switch.
If, if, if that's, yeah, well, I don't know, I don't think it has a generator already, right?
Not to my knowledge.
Right, so.
I would've thought so, but.
Alright, I don't know. I mean, we would, I mean, I, yes, we would like to have an automatic transfer switch put in. Yeah, um, but right now, there is a collection of you manual switches. That are, that run various parts of the building, okay? And the, the, I think it would be beautiful just to bolt on to that, okay? Those switches, run a, run a two hundred amp panel into the server room itself. Or have that there and then it's all encompassing within itself. So, but the generator itself would be before those switches came into play.
Generator will be on the main feed.
Exactly, I'm into the middle, yep. And that's, and that works really well with what DMU put in. Is that, cause I mean, you could just probably cut right into it, in my opinion.
Yeah.
So.
That could happen.
Okay.
It could happen, yeah.
Okay. Um, so there are some areas of demolition. That kinda need to take place to put this room in, okay? Um, is that gonna be covered to my RFP?
What do you need done?
So.
Have you been over there lately? Or ain't much left?
Well, there's, there's a room, okay, and I can pass it around here. You guys have an entry for in that IT server room, okay? I wanna move the door, but we're gonna just make this, this whole area is gonna be flush, but you still got that little like water closet sitting right in there.
Barely.
Yeah, and it's, it's there. It's, I mean, it's still got hookups and everything as far as water's concerned. Um, but my thought was, if you look at this plan, this conception, this concept that was done last fall. It's not in there. That, that room. And I just wanna know if I'm gonna be demolishing that room or if.
Have you seen it lately? There's.
Yep, well, there's still studs up in there. And I'm looking to get rid of the studs.
Yeah, if you don't, there, you don't need them, cause what you need is that.
Yep.
So what do you wanna do with that little room there? Do you wanna?
So, right now, the plan was to have a doorway sitting right neck, right, going into it, okay? And I have a closet that right now, that's in that room. I, I don't need a closet, okay? So there's part of a demolition portion that we don't need. And then, but. I don't see a need to keep that room there, cause it's not included in this plan. I just wanna know if I'm gonna put it in my RFP or if you wanna put it in the construction RFP.
If you want that out of your way, you're trying to get filled.
Yep.
And that's, that, that comes in.
I guess my thought is, and it's competing on your ability to build your room, you need to have it in your RFP.
Okay, there you go.
Question answered by at least three of us.
Yep, so. Um, one other thing, um, and I don't know if you wanna pass this around or not, okay?
Still staring at it.
Yep, there's a doorway on, that I'm, I'm, I'm circling on there. It's, it's not an ideal location. I'd rather just keep the current doorway where it's at and just widen it. Um, as far as to that room. You guys have walked through it, you've seen it. Yep, alls I wanna do is just make it a little bit bigger, not come into the community services or mental health side of it. But just widen that so it's thirty-six inches so I can get equipment in and out.
I would almost think that would be a, a necessary, because if we're gonna put a new thirty-six inch wide door so you get equipment in the building, we're gonna need it to get it into the.
Exactly, yes. Doing, yep, so I just, I figured.
So far, it's all yes.
Yeah, so. Oh. The other thing I'm looking at is timeline.
Yesterday.
The sooner the better.
So, well, I, I've got a kind of a timeline now. I can't vouch for the person that we award this construction RFP to. I don't know what their schedule is going to be like, okay? So, but my thought process is to have an RFP ready for approval next week.
Perfect.
Okay, and then we publish, um, if there was any changes that needed to be made, um, let's say you guys didn't approve it and said, hey, I want something else in there. Then I get an opportunity to, to. Then I get an opportunity to to change that, and then everything, it just gets shifted a week on that.
Can you send it out to us like Fridays?
Yeah, I was planning on doing it like Friday or Monday, I was thinking about giving you. Yeah, yeah, so, exactly, so, um, and then the following week, so last, the sixteenth would be the approval portion, okay? The twenty fourth would be the day it would be published tentatively, writing there was no issues or there wasn't.
Why such a gap?
Um, well, I wanted the opportunity to be able to rewrite it if we need to, between.
Then it'll be need reapproval, won't it?
Right, and that's why I'm saying that everything will be needed to be adjusted.
Assume that we're not gonna have any opposition, what would be the soonest, like, let's not worry about that, cause I think we'd we'd read it on Friday. Um, if there is any concerns, we could let you know, or you'd have those changed possibly and have the approval and everything that same day. Cause I see no, no reason for any weeks going by with nothing happening except for wait for us to say yes.
Okay, so. So, when I say publish, I mean that would be going out to newspapers and whatnot, okay?
Correct, just exactly what we have to do.
So, and you're looking at possibly, you wanting to do that?
Wednesday.
Yes.
Next Wednesday.
Next, yeah, next Wednesday.
Tomorrow.
So that would be.
Or one Tuesday afternoon, you can put it, get a hold of the newspaper.
We'll get it in the newspaper that week.
Yeah.
No, it won't get in that week.
Yeah.
We got different newspapers.
So, but, um, it'll also go out on the site and and whatnot, um. And then, now, I'm assuming then, well, the only thing about walkthrough is going to be that Memorial Day is gonna be in the way at that point. Well, maybe not. Cause you gotta give them, gotta give them an opportunity to to get the word out, let them see it. And and, you know, as far as construction crews and whatnot, that's how I look at it. So I think we'd have a couple of day with, we're gonna have multiple days where this is gonna be ran through the papers and on on the website. Um, so walkthrough I had had for June fifth. I mean, any issues with that? Well, cause I knew the thirtieth was Memorial Day weekend.
Well.
I don't have any issues, so.
So the thirtieth, why, why can't we talk about it on the thirtieth?
Well, I just said it's cause Memorial Day is right before it, and everybody's gonna come back. Okay, I'm talking about the construction crews here, that's what I'm thinking, I'm trying to give them.
Even they, the construction crews get to have holidays actually, so I don't think there is.
During construction.
Yeah, yeah, don't. I don't think the thirtieth is a problem, if you are so uh that you're gonna need to have thirtieth off, cause you had uh Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday off. And you gotta take Tuesday off too, I don't even think I want you working on that project.
So you wanna do, okay, so May thirtieth would be, um, walkthrough then.
Yep.
You're prepared to walk through after the big holiday.
Okay, so. So if that, then, um. So we'll be looking.
How about the water pipe, that's been the big issue that, what we need to address that elephant in the room. And we have the water pipe that's running above it, and that has to be moved before.
Yeah, that's one of the items I've got listed in my.
Okay, okay, just wanted to make sure that we didn't get to the end of that.
Nope, nope.
Because that's what I've been here and held it up.
Cause I I'm I'm still dictating part of the timeline portion, and then we've got some broad broadband costs and, um, budget and. Um, so I've got, uh, June nineteenth is the last day for questions, um. And then June twenty sixth would be the deadline for that, but I'm guessing you're probably gonna wanna move that up as far as June is concerned.
I do.
Um, the nineteenth, I'm gonna be out of the, I'm gonna be having a conference though is the thing, um.
June nineteen?
Yeah, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be at ITAC.
So if they walk through on, they walk through on the thirtieth?
Mm-hmm, so we need a couple of weeks to be able to do that, actually. It's.
Do they really need a couple of weeks?
I don't think they need a couple of weeks.
To, um, well, I mean, they need to make the proposal, so.
Don't you think a week's long enough if you want the job?
Well. They could, they they gave us the proposal for them towers in a week, so I.
I think it seems doable.
Okay.
I.
So June fifth would be the la- or the last day for questions, and then. Um, deadline would be, we can make that the same day, I suppose, if you wanted to.
Yep, either you want it or you don't.
Right.
How long do we typically get for that after walkthrough?
We don't do it often enough to be good.
I mean, it's still. But it's not, it's not.
It's it's what they do.
Split two atoms, and it's pretty straightforward, knock some holes down, put some doors in.
And then June sixth would be.
Now, that's just.
June fifth is on a Tuesday.
June fifth is a Monday.
Sixth would be a Tuesday, would be the day that we open them.
Open?
Yeah.
Open on the sixth.
Yeah, that's, I mean, June fifth is the last day that they could, you know, submit questions, well, I, they're not even submitting some questions, it's just gonna be. Last day that they can submit, and I'll I'll leave it till four PM on the fifth.
I got one more question for you before we kick you out. What do you got up, how come we aren't getting our people up there that are out in Zoom land? See where that's, the long line up there, when I, when I go over to Central Iowa Juvenile Attention, there's usually typically about ten or more people that don't get there. And they're always lined up up there, and then the other stuff sits down on the bottom blocks, now, can you adjust that?
Um, there's a couple of uh facets that are going on there, okay, if they don't have a camera, they're not gonna show up there.
They do, they they.
Well, like Bonnie, I didn't see her camera.
Her name should show up.
She was on there.
But when I was.
And it has a picture.
Picture of her was.
That's why we don't know if they're there, it's like what Jean said, when she wasn't here that time, we were sitting here guessing whether or not she was even on.
Camera, I had a camera.
So, we'll have to look at that and see what the settings are set up.
That's, and that's all I really want to know.
And the other thing, you know, like, she's monitoring chat. Usually you can see when somebody has a chat, like when I, with mental health, when we used to during COVID. You can see people, you didn't have to wait for somebody to come in and say somebody has a question, you should be able to, as, just as Zoom is supposed to be like. Their your witness kind of nuts in the background, we can't tell when somebody else joins in, we can't tell when they get off. So we just don't say, hey, are you still there?
But one of the things we do have to be cognizant about is, so, let's say you do get someone, but then they hijack the Zoom room. On you, they start making noise, they start blowing through chats.
We can mute them from here, can't we?
Well, you can mute, you can mute them as far as that aspect, but. I mean, between the chats, they're always gonna be popping up there all the time, that's one of the reasons why it's kind of set off to the side.
All of the Zoom meetings that we all have sat through since COVID and all of the Zoom meetings. I've never had anybody hijacked, but you know, they just.
Well, it's because.
You can discuss the rest of this after, let's move on so that we can get the heck out of here today.
Yeah.
I'll adjust it.
Um, so, okay, so deadline for June sixth, and we open, or no, yeah, we open on June sixth, okay? Um. And then when do we wanna announce the award date, do you just wanna announce it that same day during that meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
I can only pray we have so many.
Yeah, okay. Alright, so that's the timeline after any question about. At the base.
Yep.
Um, so broadband costs, um, there's gonna be an overlap. When we start working with this, they need, with Verkata, we need to have an internet connection, and the expectation is is that this. All of this is going to be finished before we start, you know, getting Corey in there and working, okay? He has to have a room to be able to to do anything with it, okay? So, there's going to be, um, we'll have to start up internet over there, um, with Western Iowa Networks, they already have a drop, okay? We've gotta do some massage and to get him into the server room, not a big deal, it can be done without without issue. But they're gonna start charging us for that extra loca- that location over there, is is what I'm alluding to, okay? So, but we're not gonna be moving public health in there right away, because we're still building out. Corey's stuff, and it has to communicate to the internet is what I'm alluding to.
Gonna have to be some overlap because of the the business that we're in, we can't.
Yeah, you can't just do a cut over, no, and I wanna make sure that there's that expectation's there, and I also wanna make sure that. Is that, I don't know if that's gonna be include, where that cost is gonna go, go towards, okay?
It's public health.
Public health.
Well, I don't, I think that's part of your cost of your building. Um, and like I told Jay, I said, I don't have a problem with the stuff in the roof, I'm gonna pay for that money. But if this is gonna go on for a year, you know? Then we can really justify that.
Build it to public health, okay, your budget is ninety two dollars and forty eight.
Let's go. Okay. Alright, is there a budget for this, for this, uh, project?
Told you.
Ninety, ninety eight dollars, forty two cents. That that we're looking at, so I can, I, I'm gonna be cost minded just in general, but it would be nice to have a, like, kind of a number to. To know in advance.
We have absolutely no idea what your stuff costs.
None.
We're expecting you to be a miser, but get equipment that don't break every week.
Sounds like plan, okay?
Yeah.
And so, I mean, trust to tell you what's about.
That's exactly what we need to do, yeah, we might say it's, you know.
It's only be two thousand dollars, but you know, they're gonna be.
We, as low as possible.
Right, yeah.
Taking the lowest.
Without building, without buying junk.
Okay. Are you good? Yep, um. I've already gone through the proposed changes, like with that, that door that I wanted to move, so, in accordance with the, um, original plan. Um, and then now we're gonna, I'm gonna ask about the sink above the the server room.
A sink?
There's a sink, okay, so the first floor is concrete.
Yeah.
Okay, and there is, um, according to the plan that I saw, um, there is a sink directly above. The IT server room, or where it's going to be. Um, now, we can redirect, I mean, I can redirect all the pipes and everything, but what do you do about a sink that sits directly above it?
The the sinks?
That sink stays in the part of the home maker room.
Okay.
If it's a concrete floor between you and it, I mean, what's the chance there?
What will happen?
I mean, I guess, uh, the bigger question is where, I mean. The intent is to have those water pipes, at least before I knew about this sink, we were just gonna.
I'm worried about the sink between concrete, you know, if we have to put a floor in there that's waterproof or water barrier, I guess we do.
But my my point was that, I know we were intent intending just to. If redirect if we needed to, or cap.
Cause if that water needs to get to that bathroom.
Right.
Do not cap it off.
Right.
Right.
But if it's, I mean, but I don't know if that services.
The home maker room?
As far as those pipes are concerned, so.
Neither do we.
Yeah, um, I'm just kinda mentioning this could be a potential hurdle that we have to navigate, so.
Rain it dark and.
Um.
Well, as now, I don't think we have to cross that bridge yet.
Okay, so.
See, see what, when they're doing their, their RFP, you just explained this pipe goes around.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be done through the wall.
And however, that's gotta be unhooked, and the sink, he just said he needs it. We just need to make sure that everything's sealed so the water don't come down to you.
Uh-huh, and the only last question that I have, um, cause I've heard since last fall. Don't believe it, okay, cause I, I just wanna know if if that concept is still. We're still working with that plan or not?
Yeah, I wouldn't pass that around again.
So, but the only thing that I'm, yeah, the only thing that you see there.
Well, this wall's not, this wall's not coming out, this is, this is gonna stay, um. These will be, nothing's changed here, DHS and mental health, that, those are gonna be little offices, whether they. They may want larger spaces to meet, so they may possibly be meeting out here, if they have a family that, you know, they're going to court and the whole family's there. That's not gonna be big enough for them, and originally we thought about taking this wall out, making this one big room. But there's that pipe going up, and so since we have this big space up here, we're gonna just keep these as two smaller ones. Yeah, yeah, so, this bathroom is completely torn out, and so that's gonna still, yeah, it's basically the same, yeah, this is still gonna be employed.
You are where you are, okay, and that's fine, I just making sure that when I'm writing this thing, that I know what I'm writing it for.
Of course, yeah, we want it written right.
So, but yeah, the only, like I said, that only point of contention is the movement of that, this door here to here, um.
That's your baby.
Yep, so, and I.
Move wherever you want.
Okay, as long as it's not, as long as it's not going into mental health, yep. So, and and mental health, or excuse me, community services and DHS are still gonna be at that location, correct?
Correct.
And maybe even.
Cause I heard otherwise, so.
If you didn't hear it from one of the five of us or three, it's wrong info.
Fair enough, so. And the only last thing, and I, we we were supposed to have a a meeting last week, and I wanna make sure I kinda hammer this on us, we didn't purchase any servers for that room. There are no servers going in that room.
You got, they've already got some, right?
There are servers going in that.
There are, but we already got them, there's no new ones going in here.
Well, I sure wasn't at any meeting.
Okay, I just.
Another IT meeting.
Well, like, so we, last Friday, we were supposed to attend one and you couldn't make it, and she asked if there was a, any servers coming in, and I was like.
What what would those servers be for?
There's no, well, there's.
There's no new ones, the ones from pu- current public health are coming over.
Yeah, no, that was the only question, what happened is, what was happening to the things that were at public health, that was the only question.
The only, like, I'm leaving it to Wisconsin Broadband to determine if they're gonna keep their equipment, okay, cause right now, we're gonna have to move the node. Over there, and, um, if they wanna renew their equipment, that's on them, we're not gonna pay for that, obviously, they already, they own this equipment. Um, but they have the opportunity to upgrade in the interim between when we move from there to the other location.
Okay.
So, um, but, yeah, um. But that was the, yeah, that's, that's everything that I have to to, I need to write this RFP at this point, so, um, any additional? And, well, I'm, I I went, yep, I went over there with Rob Bradley and Dwayne, and we we did the walkthrough. I also did one with ICIT, that's why Joel was here last Friday. And, uh, um.
Will will Rob Bradley have things to do with this also?
Well, I mean, I've, I've used him as a consultant, like.
Do we have to pay him to come up there and walk through there with us?
Well, I mean, I had a meeting with him and I did pay, I did have to, I paid him sixty bucks.
Oh. No, fifty bucks cash is nice.
Well, no, but I, it was out of my, out of the budget just for the hour that he was there. Um, just to, cause he's built two server rooms in this town already, why wouldn't I at least solicit it?
I don't see as a waste, I appreciate your effort, and uh, look forward to seeing the final project of the RFP.
Yeah, so, or Lynn falls asleep, though, we need to get to the next item on the agenda.
Very much.
And I just asked, Jacob, why you're here, can you give us or me a timeline of when maybe the, uh, meetings that are being recorded? Any access from the website?
Um, we, I have talked with Michelle about this, and we are gonna, I I'd like to do a YouTube site or YouTube. A account, yeah, channel, um, where we upload those, uh. Those, the board meetings to that.
Tim is wondering when, how soon?
How soon, um? It's been on my radar, but I don't have any for you at this time, um.
That's your one, Tim, you just wanna have access to the whole committees.
Um, and so, but yeah, sure.
You gotta come up and give, you know, you gotta give time to download it, I mean, if that doesn't fit your schedule, other trouble.
Yep, I'm I'm.
It'd be nice if I made that link available right on the crop account.
Yeah.
That's been a request.
Yeah, everybody wants to see our smiling faces.
That's right.
I did need some, I mean, it's not an actionable item, but I did need approval to be able to put those on YouTube. Cause I know you guys, you know, I mean, it's public, you know, I I understand it's still a public forum, but.
Yeah.
Um.
It's an open meeting, if anything that happens here is.
Right, that's right.
Exactly right, it is what it is.
Perfect.
So.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate you coming by.
Yep.
Thanks for all the efforts you put into it. Alright, next on the agenda is credit card limit increase to ten thousand dollars for the baby boutique.
It was in the folder.
Lynn, that that's grant money, basically, right?
Use that one for spending down grants.
Is that a pass through thingy?
Most of the money that we're gonna be spending on will be, uh, maybe have more.
I mean, is, does the budget even get to ten thousand dollars, I guess I would just saw that sheet.
It will, I'll change the credit limit, so. But I don't do that, especially this big one, I don't do it without.
Without us?
Or was the old?
We do this.
Credit, the old credit card.
Right now, it's five thousand, we get this about every year, I mean, it seems like.
Unfortunately, yeah.
Yeah.
See, you basically need it for this one time, work is Lynn.
No, we will need it probably through, I would say safely through this, maybe July.
Just, the only reason I ask that is I'm, I'm, I don't like credit cards in the government, but I, I see they're, they're necessary evil to function. But if we could up this, and then after you get through.
Have a sunset.
Will that be by the end of the fiscal year?
What we do, we just up it until July or August, then bring it back down.
So we could do it to the end of the fiscal year?
That'd be the first.
Well, that would in keep it in July for any normal expenses, cause the odds are that it won't be paid by July first.
Well, this sound like you've uh maybe I gotta have a better, a plan in place here, so to where we can up this and use it, and then you'll let us know that, hey, I got that grant spent, let's drop it back down. Ten thousand dollars for baby boutique until. Until that grant spent.
Right, right, I mean, right now, Amy's got eleven thousand sitting, sitting on a card on the internet waiting to be bought, just because of this, so.
Okay, so there's a motion.
It's a motion with the sunset of some sort or.
And we can't until that grant's paid.
Lynn will just have to be in contact with us when he gets to that plane.
Have a motion to raise it to ten thousand.
Period, alrighty.
There's a motion to raise the credit card limit to ten thousand until the grant has been spent, and then it'll be lowered back to five. I have a second.
Well, mine was just to make.
I know, but he can move it down, it's easy, we just need approval to move it up, right, and that's all the motion is.
The motion been made to move it up to ten thousand. And it was seconded by Mr. Dozar, any further discussion hearing none, all in favor states so by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Okay, HR one source. What's that? You're gonna go get Amy? Yep, next up, tax abatement parcel number zero five L one one five seven five. Maria de Jesus Infante.
So there's nothing there?
Really just.
I think I remember.
Did anybody else wanna see this? None of them, I'm gonna pass it back to Gene.
But we got here. Um, we need to do a tax abatement. It needs to be story, the story worse than that. Okay, so this has come before you guys before, but she hadn't completed her all her steps from the fire, this is a fire that took place uh July of twenty twenty-two out at Sunset. She thought if she just came and told us that it was gone, and gave us pictures, that that was good enough. So she finally got back to us last week after we sent her her late notice in May, saying she hadn't hit any of her taxes. So what we're asking for is um a junk certificate has been issued, we got proof that it's obviously destroyed. Lois can't bring another one in until everything's cleaned up. Um, she's also called and asked us to abate it, not just Maria talking to us. Um, so we need eighty-eight dollars of taxes removed, six dollars of interest, and a four dollar complication fee, please, and thank you. Lois shoved in, yeah, it's gone.
And that's your recommendation is to be bad.
Yeah, yeah, just, we're not getting, she's not gonna pay it, yeah.
As long as we do it with the consistency that we're done, everybody else is, I'm all in favor of it.
Is that your motion then, huh?
No, I've made enough.
Gene made some motion to abate this tax, for this tax abatement, I already read all the numbers. Alright, and seconded by Mr. Mulbauer. Any further discussion, hearing none, all in favor states so by saying aye. Opposed, nay, chair votes aye. Thank you, Amy. Citizens input.
I have just one question, I was hoping I could get an update on where the board was with the safety ordinance for the pipeline.
Oh, for this, an ordinance?
We, uh.
We really don't, we really weren't working on a, a safety ordinance, I mean, we were, we were working on some ordinances.
Restoration and.
You know, for the uh protection of the land, putting things back, those type of things. I mean, what, what defines safety ordinance, I mean. See, we can't make an ordinance for safety.
Um, which we, I don't know if it's safe to say that it's a mirror, but it was, it was uh very similar to the one that Shelby County had, you know, offered to all the counties to look at and take action on at their discretion, and I'm just curious where that one is, if that one is now out, or whether you're waiting for.
Well, we're dragging our feet to see what happens with them, otherwise we're in the same boat, you see what I'm saying?
I, I think back where we've been using legal counsel's best advice to. And where that's the road, or our county attorney is at this point in time, he said, don't really or correct me if I'm wrong, we didn't really see the need to mirror Shelby counties and go down the same path they did, cause if theirs is effective, that's gonna change the whole outlet of the whole project.
And we've also had outside counsel with you, you know, experts.
That's why we filed an injunction with the. They thought that was the best, most effective route to file an injunction, so we will be at the, the table at the hearing, or at least have a seat in the same.
And they did say, uh, the IUV board, Gene, that Martha's um filing was one of the best. That they've received from a county, as far as having their ducks in the road, think it's your voice.
Crawford didn't just planning to participate in the happening sometime in July, is what I understand that?
I do believe that's the.
We haven't got any notification yet.
That's the path where our sector.
It keeps that door open for us to make sure our voices are.
One of the things that we talked about when we did have an opportunity to visit with the governor about all the unknowns, is it's hard to fight against something, we don't even know what it really is gonna hap- you know, and so we're kinda waiting to have to sit at the table with the intervention, so that once we actually see what it is, cause the still move, I mean, moving target everywhere, so, um, and there, anything you put in place if it's against what they feel it needs to be, it's gonna be an automatic lawsuit, and so then we're just spending good tax dollars, and we didn't even really know what we're fighting for and against at this point in time, is kinda the way we left it, does that make sense?
Okay, so, and I don't know what the schedule is, um, it sounded like that maybe they're in the process of litigation when Riley and the crew were here from Summit. But they weren't.
As far as Shelby County and.
Correct. So I'm just, I guess hypothetically speaking is there interest from this board that if Shelby County's ordinance stands that you are interested in implementing something for Crawford County before IUV rules on a permit? Yeah, that's my understanding, that if some against their permit, any action then by any counties after that is like we don't have to follow what you say because it's after the fact.
And they might even say that because they'll say that the state and the feds are looking after that, and so that trumps whatever. They are already protecting us. Don't worry, little counties. And the feds have this all handled, they've been doing this forever.
Kinda pre-exempt.
That's why we were waiting to see what happened with Shelby's, because right now, as it stands, because there's federal regulation that governs the safety. In fact, they, we got told if we make an ordinance with anything to do with safety, it's a guaranteed lawsuit. Now, now Shelby's has legitimacy, well, that probably changes things.
Did you hear Riley say today, if Shelby's county's lawsuit stands, this project will be in the toilet?
I've heard that.
Cause there's only one thing they're hooking on to down in, down by Shannon Door, right?
For starts.
Yeah, and there's only one thing they're hooking on to, and the next thing will be if Anderson's hooks on.
Okay, is there true to the fact that Anderson has an existing contract with the CO2?
Well, I don't know about that.
Signed an easement to keep their options open, but that's not gonna happen until that existing contract is.
They're, they're taking a middle of the road approach to all of this because they're keeping their options open.
I think that's public knowledge, right, what you just said.
Yeah, that's pretty much what Trevor Lawley confirmed me, to me, when I talked to him in regards to that they, that X amount of but in the future if that falls apart, there's potential, maybe we could still have a fair market of value left to that.
Right now, that means.
They don't plan on using it currently, but.
But may I, I'll interject one more thing that I think, um, you know.
Continental carbonics.
Part of the, what I think, why Shelby's uh lawsuit seems to be gonna be more successful than the other counties is that they're going more on their uh setbacks, and so they've set that so that you can't do anything within two miles of their city limits, which they cannot live with that, if that passes, there's no way they can go through. Safety, they can always re-up how they're gonna, what they're gonna do for the safety, but Shelby probably is going to win, kinda because of how they, it's not all about safety, it's more about their economic development going forward, and they have land use plan in place. Part of them coming in, where uh Crawford County did not have an active land use plan that we could stand on and say, we have always kept this uh to area for future either housing or economic and for years, where it said, nobody can come in here, and that's where their, their ace in the hole kinda was, is that that, they've already had that in place, they can't come any, any further. So for us, you know, we had thought about possibly, you know, talk, talking about that, and our airport was one of the things we were most concerned about. Well, they'd signed something back in November of twenty-one, if they're okay with where they're gonna be, so we as the county can't really fight you know, where that goes, when the city's already kind of signed off on, it's okay if you come this close to us, so we didn't have that to stand on, so we had no land use plan in place, and so Shelby's got a little bit different circumstances than we do too. They just can't make up that rule.
And you gotta have something, actually, if we'd have had a CDC director that knew to do those kinda things. We'd probably have those things in place, but I, I would be willing to bet that most boards aren't always aware of them things. It's, I mean, it's just such, you know.
Again, my frustration with this is that a lot of this groundwork was laid by Summit. And then it was like, oh, by the way, Crawford County Board of Supervisors, we're gonna throw the pipeline across the country.
Well, they talked to the city of Dennison back in November of twenty-one. Did anybody know about? You know, and they'd signed off on.
They'd already made it difficult on us for the two mile setback that we'd like to have had and all that stuff, yeah, so there's more to it.
My only concern with the um excuse of saying, oh, well, FMSA and the state has already got this there's no existing regulations specific for carbon dioxide.
They talked about.
Say, oh, well, we've got all of these regulations, yeah, nothing, so the barn door is wide open, but the, and that's what I believe they are planning to do, if this all signs still delivered before these new regulations come in, that's like I said.
Well, didn't he just say that a lot of the other, cause they're a hazardous pipeline, a lot of them other ones come, kinda transfer over onto them? Didn't he say that today? I guess we should prob- we could probably have Martha check into that, but that's what he mentioned today while he was sitting there, that young man right, I don't remember his name, but. Nebraska guy.
That's correct.
Kind of the double edged sword, what they, what they're doing, they're using it as a utility, so they can get the utility to. But by declaring them as a hazardous material pipeline, they have to accept the hazardous material safety.
Exactly.
The IUV.
Cause I don't necessarily believe it to be that hazardous, in my own opinion, for my, my it's safer than a, than the, the natural gas or propane pipeline that runs through your ass property, that is a for-profit pipeline currently, so.
These are all the pipelines. That's supposed to make me feel better.
What's that?
All these pipelines that's run through the United States, that's supposed to, or Iowa. So it's supposed to make me feel better.
First, our job's to protect Crawford County, whatever's going on in other counties deserves it.
Comes down again to chicken and eggs and stuff, it's like everybody wants so, well, with the wind turbines, I mean, they come in here, well, everybody wants electricity, well everybody wants their cell phone, everybody wants this, everybody wants that, you know, it's our job, I hate the thing, things, windmills, but I'm not gonna it's not my spot to sit there and say no, but.
Well, we, I think we gave a good solid ordinance.
Complimented on that because from, unless you've heard more, I haven't heard a peep about a windmill farm.
No, they, they were here that one day, and it kinda fell apart after that, which.
I think, I think now, what it did to us, I mean, if you guys excuse me, I know we're running to overtime here, but just to help Tim out, part of our objective was if these, if they keep pushing for all this solar and wind energy, they're gonna come to every county eventually. But we wanted to give our farmers the most negotiating power possible when it comes to that, because we felt that was our job isn't to protect the people that build these windmills, our job is to protect the farmers at Crawford and the citizens, all the citizens, but the farmers, cause that's whose land it'll be on. That's who our job is to protect, so when we were building that particular ordinance or that, that, that construction compliance, when we were building that, that was our objective, is, is that you guys would have the negotiating you wouldn't be under, under them, you'd be at least equal to them, if not even having a nudge yet, that was our object. And to me, that's fair, they should have to come in and impress you, not you impress them.
We've also pushed big times. That with property tax, rollbacks, cuts, changes, that's the state's looking at doing, we pushed Representative Holt pretty hard, saying, hey taxis, wind turbines, and these solar fields and these pipelines at a reasonable rate, that's not such a.
Give them the federal funds to.
Right.
Break it in.
And we haven't quite dug in about that, trust me.
Pass that tax back to the county, so we can naturally lower our levy rates, naturally operate a county without having to raise property taxes. Why give the big boys a break?
Well, to help them find, start out, you know, we, the United States of America and Iowa has helped a lot of things get started. But once they're up and rolling, now they need to pair, pay their fair share. Now, will that create your electricity bill, you have to go up a little bit, I mean, mid-America's got one of the cheapest rates in the country, or at least I'm told that. Um, but will it make your power go, cost of power go up some? It might, but that's, that's one of the things that we've gotta evaluate as we're, as we're doing this. But I still think that they need to pay their fair share, because, well, all of our stuff has got cut lately. And we're, we're, this, these five people sitting here, we're worried about what we're gonna be paying for things with in five years, you know?
Sure, last question I had, um, and, and maybe I can go to the county attorney for this, but when Paul was talking about the right of way. Technically, cause I understand it, technically, the landowner owns to the center of the road. And the county has an easement to maintain those roads. So as it stands now, that landlord still hasn't say whether the pipeline goes through that area, is that correct?
That's correct, you, you should have, yeah, and then we went down, I, anyways, I talked to Paul, was that also that you own the property? We have an easement to maintain a road within them right away. Any utility that wants to co-locate or operate within that should have an easement with the property. That's why Paul was saying he would have a hard time draft any road crossing permits until he knew both property owners on both sides were signed up. Uh, which I respect, but, so we thought, well, there's our, there's maybe a, a little bit of a leg to, a little crease to pull on, to or injunctions and laws, whatever we needed to do, but it comes back, they said, well so we try to think what's gonna happen when we get to court, cause they'll end up in court. And they're just gonna say, well, do you have that for the home company presently? Yeah, do you, so that's why, well, Paul's at least gonna not issuing permits on the adjacent, on the roads adjacent to landowners that are not in favor of the pipeline going through that property.
Yeah, I definitely, I mean, I understand if it is a true utility, but.
That should still have you, they, they still need to.
With the pipeline, and they're a private company, that's where I guess.
A lot of them, a lot of them, like, you know what, though, phone companies and stuff get to be, you know, it's a lot of times that's private. A lot of them, a lot of them, like, you know what, though, phone companies and stuff get to be, you know, there's a lot of times that's private companies too. You know, the, the different things that get into our easements might be a private company, gas companies, they're, they're for profit. Maybe you don't call them private, but they're for profit. So it's kind of all in the same ballpark.
There's a gas line that runs right down the, out here to the dog, to that, I call it Dog Hoop Plant from Dennison. I've seen it rough and close personal all day, hanging in a ditch.
So I mean, there's, when, when, Tim, what, we have never not tried to, I mean, Steve's been a lot more aggressive down there. That's costing Shelby County some money, you know, I mean, and God bless him for doing it, you know, but. As far as it goes, we, because that was already in place and we seen what was going on. I don't know, I, we, we kind of figured that we could probably, you know, discretion was the better part of valor in cer- certain sense. And then jump in there if, if that, if, if some of that stuff works to our advantage as well then. And if it don't, at least we saved our taxpayers' money without being frivolous in spending on attorneys when we didn't think that. You know, we just, we just, you know, we've been kind of wary of that. We don't know how well that's going to turn out. I mean, you never know what a judge is.
It's not that we put our head in the sand. We, we've seeked outside counsel. We've looked at many different avenues, angles, things we can do. Work with outside counsel that's directly in the heat of the whole lawsuits with the other counties. So. We're, we're trying to navigate this very cautiously, but also be prepared to protect and do what we need to do first, Miss Zier.
And we're not, we're not the only county that's doing it that way. A lot of them, you know. Now, some of them don't have a pipeline coming at them presently, but there are, every one of them, we talk to them at these statewide meetings or even the four counties. We, we, we visit with other supervisors pretty regular. I mean, Dave's on the board at ISAC. I mean, things like this get discussed there. I'm sure of that.
Quite frequently.
Yeah.
The four counties just met.
Yeah, we just had a meeting with the, and, and Steve kind of break. We're always worried about saying too much. So I mean, I don't think he gave us any secrets, but I mean, he kind of updated us on how stuff was going somewhat there. I mean, there's things they can't talk about either, obviously, while it's in process.
Has there been a court date on that? I guess I've been out of the loop.
Not that I'm aware of yet.
Colin and Martha are watching that.
Yeah.
They are.
Yeah, they're staying on top. Martha stays on top of stuff. I mean, I'm sure that Colin, but I mean, Martha's been doing a lot of that to us.
Can I interject in that?
Pardon me, ma'am?
This is Karen Aaron Holt. The court date is set for in January. I believe it's January twenty fourth for Shelby's court date.
In the January?
January twenty fourth?
January twenty fourth, yes.
Thank you.
That's next year. So if things move.
So is it going to be closer than you think?
So I U V will rule.
I U V's ruling is by the. Well, this whole thing has been weird, Craig.
But the I U V's ruling will proceed.
But I would still think that the lawsuit would have to get settled before.
They need an October.
So I guess my caution then is. Will that, pardon the expression, leave Crawford County with hands down? Nothing is taken, nothing, no action is taken before the October I U V meeting.
It would be my understanding that since we have lodged a formal intervention. That we would have a seat at the table if the way that that comes down, there was any concerns that we didn't think. Pertained that Crawford County didn't know was going to be in there, that we would have a seat at that table. Well, that's when we'd have to hire an outside attorney to go down and plead our case why that's not fair to us. That the way of fairness, understanding the intervention.
Our two big things were eminent domain and.
Soil restoration.
Soil restoration and, and you know, we've been pressing on them and I'm going to tell you something, if we, if you've been paying attention. Their depths have been going down since we've been talking to them.
Originally it was three, then it's four.
So we're having success already the way I look at it, and that's why I pushed it out to some of the other things. That aren't, you know, like the Dry Creeks or something like that, because typically I'm more worried about one of them. Where it come, a field comes out into a, into a walk, you know, into where you have a timber area. And then that keeps moving down, like just disc it out or push it, push some dirt into the hole and that kind of keeps moving everything down. In, in fifteen, twenty years, all of a sudden we're only a foot or two above that and somebody sticks in fence posts because they want to put some cattle on that. Even, you know, a steel post, you could drive that in deep enough to, I don't think it'd rupture that line, mind you, but you see what I'm getting at. So I was worried about those kind of things and I think that we're actually got them thinking about it now and, and they seem to be. I've never felt that the, when we're talking to them, now, there might be some things that you guys are like, like Bonnie caught them on today on some stuff. Uh, and they, they really didn't have a good answer for it, so I assume she caught them, but, uh. As far as it goes, I, I think that we're actually kind of nudging the needle in our favor as we go here. And because we are talking to them and because with Steve, I mean, or Shelby County, let's say, I mean, I don't want to just put it all on Steve. But Shelby County, I'm, they're at odds enough where I don't know that there's a lot of talking going on there. But at least we're talking and they're trying to help because we're visiting with them. They're trying to protect our land with us. At least that's the way it looks to me.
They've also, they've also had a lot of involvement from outside just the county, with the cities. EMA, schools, more so than we ever did with Crawford.
Yeah, and that's the thing is the cities, we're the, this board is the only one that said anything to them. Dennison, I mean, they gave them the clear green light way back, when did you say it was? Twenty twenty one? I mean, they, you know, and I, some of the comments I've heard is they, they want to run it right up Main Street, go ahead, you know? I don't know that that was actually said.
Truly tattoo, they didn't know what they needed to know.
Well.
They still haven't been in here.
You know, nobody's came here, but we've only had like four or five of you guys. I mean, and we appreciate the information because we're using that. Especially like when Gene and I sat in here that day, we, we had our notes and we were, the stuff that you guys are bringing up with. You know, eminent domain's pretty tough for us. That's an I U B thing, you know, and, and, and we still, you look at the influence of with talking to Steve. Now, Holt, with talking with him and him helping sat down and helped create that legislation. I mean, so it's been positive. It's like nobody's, it isn't like anybody's not working for y'all. We're, we are, you know, it's just. Sometimes we feel like we're handed like this, you know?
One of the questions that I've had is does our ordinance for wind turbines and the decimal, uh, does that pertain? If there happen to be the pipeline, they say we won't hear it, but we've heard there is going to be some noise. Will that cover the noise of the pipe, underground pipes, the same thing that we have in Crawford County as far as decimal limit?
Well, we don't, we got that specifically for the turbines. I don't know.
That's kind of what I thought.
So, and you know, with it getting deeper in the ground, I'm, I'm worrying less and less about the, the noise from that. But you know what? It might be something that we have to take a look at.
Somebody asked me about and I didn't.
The last thing I just want to know, has anyone at this table heard of any limits on tonnage? Of. Equipment, weight, I guess weight limits, maybe we could use a better term.
You mean on a roadway?
Travers across this pipeline. And the reason that I.
Oh, you mean while it's already built or they're, when they're out in the spec? I think you're going to have to have that in your personal contract, you know, because it's off the roadways. We really don't have any.
There's a pipeline that goes to Connaughton underneath thirty, Anderson's, there's one that goes under the railroad and under the highway.
And so I would say that, you know, your state legal limits, you know, like a, for a trip, for a triple axle truck and triple axle trailer. I said it's a quad axle truck and a triple axle trailer. Ninety six thousand pounds is the limit.
That's covered out, I'm sure in the federal.
So I, I would say that they're going to have to abide by them rules.
Any time that we've asked, it's, oh, well, we'll have to get back to you on that.
But for us to try to dictate on your, your property or what the, that'd be kind of restrictive.
You know, and, and that's the thing.
We'd be stepping into an area where I don't want to get into.
What's that? Oh, the only thing I'll say about that is we did spend the money on, on behalf of the county. We do, we donated in with the other ninety nine counties where the soil management or, you know, the moisture content and those type of things for compaction. If you end up do something, doing a contract, I'd find out what that is, that you can get that put in there. It's got to be getting close to being done. That way you can use that to your benefit, because it, you, in a sense, have already paid for part of it, so.
What is it that that's specifically called?
Soil compaction study, I think that's what they.
I don't know what's great.
And it's the university that's doing it, so.
We chipped in on that.
Yeah, so I mean, and I don't know that it's done yet. In fact, I'm sure it's not done yet. We haven't been told of that. But it's got to be getting close. I mean, I don't know what, what all they had to do, but.
I, yes, if I can add a few things, I've got four things actually. The noise ordinance is what we need for the capture facility. It's not necessarily underneath the pipes for that pig launcher. So we might want to take.
Like down at.
Like at the ethanol plant where they're actually going to do the transfer. They've already told us that it will be, there will be noise involved with that. So we might want to look into it. And how loud.
We can look into, so are we going to put on, just to be argumentative, are we going to put an ordinance on the noise that Smith feels creating? With their, with, with their line of work or their line of business?
That would be great. That would be great for the citizens and also for the rendering plant for APC out there. Um, the third, second thing is the FEMSA meeting. I don't know, I, sorry, I was at the I U B meeting this morning, so I didn't get in what Summit said in the beginning. Um, were you guys notified that it's going to be June or May thirty first and June first for the FEMSA meeting? They're coming to Des Moines. I sent an email to each of. Excuse me?
I got an email on that.
I sent an email just during this meeting now for, to register, but it need, you need to be registered by May twelfth to have the option to attend in person or on Zoom. And then the I U B, the I U B meeting in October has not been ordered yet. That's just the proposed, um, schedule. There are twenty four landowners down there in the meeting today, asking to push that back because it's during prime. Farmer season harvesting, so they're asking to be next May or later. Plus they want the FEMSA reg- regulations completed and finalized before they do that meeting. And then the ISU. Go ahead.
I heard. The ISU today about. Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so the ISU, the soil, they ran out of money, so that last I heard it wasn't completely funded, so it's not been completed yet.
Well, we hadn't heard that.
I haven't heard that either. ISAC kicked in from all the counties, um, funding to do it.
I thought that was.
The go ahead.
Yeah, that was the, we divided that out.
The funding was done before the study, right? They didn't want to do the study.
We'll have Dave check with Bill. He's on the board.
Pretty sure that that was a go.
That's great. Yeah, the last time I heard that they were short and they were asking for individual farmers to, to contribute.
Well, we never ever did. I mean, I talked to soybean growers and the, and the corn growers and. And we could talk to them again because I don't know that they kicked in anything in because we'd all, every county kicked in enough.
Unless there's a, another element of the study that's beyond ISAC scope that didn't get funded.
It could be.
I'm not sure. It'd be great if it was done.
Yeah, we'd like to have it done because we were wanting to use it too.
Because if it wouldn't have happened, ISAC would have said, here's your money back. You know. And I'm pretty sure from the county level that that happened through ISAC. Not, like I said, maybe there's another part of it that didn't get, that Iowa State wanted that didn't get full amount.
I thought there was some seasonal aspects to it, but I mean, after, the spring is always the hardest season to deal with. So I think that that's what I always thought was taking a while, but anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Karen, appreciate it. Anybody else have anything?
Ma'am, other, they didn't pass all these.
Yeah, FYI, it's like, if you want to talk about it some more, let's get it on the agenda. But that gives you some ideas of what you may or may not want in the counties, so. Right, that probably needs to be, the human trafficking part probably needs to be in our handbook, so our department heads.
Thanks, Tim.
Know.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. That when they're booking hotels that are maybe not ISAC related, you know, not in the chain of like ISAC. They need to make sure that those hotels, um, have that training. Have that human trafficking training because we legally cannot pay those claims.
Oh, I did not know that. Thank you.
Do some homework and come back with some ideas next week.
There's a little chunk of Iowa code that talks about it. There's some info.
Should I check on that with my Naco training then?
Uh, maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can't stay at them.
Well, you can stay there. We just can't wait for it. To me, that sounds like.
Limit your cheaper hotels that probably don't do the training.
Right.
Yeah, that's another thing. I think about that. How they in probably don't, I, I.
I know those connected to ISAC, I, I would wager to bet that they are covered.
Naco and ISAC.
Yeah, maybe, yeah. Naco probably is. You could probably contact someone with Naco and they'd be able to tell you for sure. FYI.
Thank you.
But if you want to continue on with this policy talk and changing our handbook language.
I think we should look.
To include maybe mileage limits or separating what those meal costs are. Rather than having a blanket amount or using language that says, you know, if a conference includes said meal.
Yeah.
That that reduces the daily amount. It doesn't mean that you have thirty to spend on dinner. Because that's the only meal you had to legally pay for. In my eyes. I'm as frugal as they come, so.
Starbucks, they're wanting to get a twenty dollar cup of coffee and charge it for breakfast.
Right, right.
I, I've never been to a, well, I haven't, shouldn't say I've never been to a Starbucks.
I hope to Starbucks and get black coffee plain.
Anything else before the board?
Second.
Moved and seconded that we adjourn. Any further discussion, not hearing none, I, all in favor states of by saying aye. Opposed, nay.
We have made.
We didn't get them thirty minutes.
I like seeing with you guys. I don't want you to beat me.
I got two computers here. Who's listening?
See ya. Tell Grandma howdy. Oh, you're going straight to the dirt? Have fun.
Grandma hole?
No, I don't think she can come back. I really don't.
I was hoping John.
What's that? Oh, you're getting a call.